I'd like to call to order a meeting of Athens City Council Services Committee will start, and then we'll go on and look at committee of the whole with Community Food Initiative, composting expansion, planning and development committee next, finance and personnel, and then about midnight we should be to arts and recreation, and transport committee probably at about 2:00 or 3:00. Okay, enough levity, on with it. City Services Committee, I have several things on the agenda, and one of them is the Columbus Road Project, water and sewer. I believe that we have some FEMA money, and the mayor just handed me a clutch of papers, the total project cost for plan to contract services to remove vegetation, excavate and remove damaged sewer line, excavate and remove manholes, de-water as required, place aggregate base, place almost a mile of new line, place 16 new manholes, refill with excavated materials, contour ground, seed and straw to prevent erosion. There's the answer to the question I asked last week. For a total of somewhere in the vicinity of if we add contingency, or is that added already, around 8.5 with about, probably up to 9.3 with contingency? Is that what we're talking about, Mayor, do you think?
Yeah, about 70. On those sewer?
Yes.
About $73,000 for contingency, and then I think 45 or so for project administration and such. So we'll be 8.60, 8.65, somewhere right through there. And of that, eventually, it'll be upfronted, FEMA would reimburse us $634,317. So that's a net of $242,000, and then we should get 12.5% of the actual cost after the project from them. So I'm estimating, if everything goes well, we might have $130,000. But we have to borrow all the money upfront, because FEMA will reimburse us after the fact.
Jim said he'd borrow any money we needed borrowed, so we'll be ready. We'll have ordinances up to do this as we proceed.
Nancy?
Yes.
Is that for...
I haven't done water line yet, that's next.
Okay, that's my question.
Next item is, the Columbus Road water line, and this is something that I believe a smaller committee decided that we should do as long as we were working in the vicinity of that area. Now we have, we have some things we need to repair, so imagine yourself at the top of the hill above the fire station, up by the quick change, and then go down the hill, think about the distance there. We're going to replace the water line. We also have a pump station we need to upgrade, and we don't have the information on that. You have an A and a B contract, and I may have shuffled my deck and not know what the second one is, but the cost that you want to have covered is $1,003,000 out of the water fund to be borrowed, since we don't have any more debt there.
Well, we don't have to do all of it, because the Columbus Road water line is a separate project, which will bid separately, will be about, what, $641,000, something like that.
Pardon me, I combined the two of them, A and B. Okay, it's a bargain, cheaper than the sewer line.
Now, the pump house has an ARC grant with it of $250,000 or so, so that'll be under $100,000, but we're at environmental clearances right now, so we haven't even got to the final design stage, so I think it'll be probably the end of May before we even get to the design stage on that. So we'll need something just to start that process. What I would probably recommend in the water fund, we ended last year with, I think, $625,000 cash balance, probably spend about $300,000 of that on the Columbus Road water line between Second Street and where the current pump house is. Now, and that, when we had it designed, I think it's in the part I gave you, is that's what, will include the cost of replacing the sidewalk between Sunset and Second.
As possible.
So that adds another $50,000, $60,000 to the project, but that's where we're going to put the line, so.
Might as well do it.
Yeah, might as well do it, just wanted you to know what was in the cost. Then we'll put some of that maybe, but that would still leave us a $200,000, $225,000 reserve in the water fund, so. And the good news was in January we paid off one of the OWDA loans, and next January we pay off the final one. So that'll free up about $75,000 to $80,000 per year that we've been spending the last 20 years on those loans. We'll be then freed up to start paying that indebtedness. So we should be, we're almost debt-free, but we decided to borrow some more, probably about $400,000 at the most.
The other item, then, I guess, that probably people need to know is, because of the requirements, we'll be taking one of the lanes out, won't we?
No, I think we'll avoid doing that.
You're going to avoid doing it now?
We're going to put the sewer on the hillside, and the water on the other side, and it looks like we'll have to cross there by Circle Drive with the sewer, but we won't have to take out, we have enough right away. The plan right now is not to take out any of Columbus Road, in fact, try not to touch it other than the crossover, so we won't have much repair to do there.
Because there was some discussion when we were doing the street tour.
We talked, that was one of the options, yes.
Good. All right, so some variation on these ordinances will be coming through. Continuing on, trying to work through this fairly quickly, my second agenda item is utilities billing, water regulations, and I passed out a form, this was something we were talking about in, of all things, December. Ray asked us to consider this change, and for a while it seemed that we had a lot of pressure from a proposed state ordinance that didn't quite make it to prime time, but Ray's reasons were pretty sound, and I'd like to read those, or at least summarize them very quickly. What he wants to do, and this would be effective the 1st of September, so that would give all of the interested parties a chance to make their arrangements for next year. But, so our current regulations say, when a person other than the property owner makes application for water service, the property owner shall sign the application along with the applicant, and both parties shall be held jointly and severally responsible for the payment of water charges. Unless otherwise specialized, specified, I should say, bills will be rendered to the applicant only, but the property owner will be notified if a bill for water is delinquent. Our proposed revision would whack everything out of there, and so it says, "All contracts for water service shall be made directly with the property owner and will remain with the property owner's name." This is the 1st of September again, to make sure that everybody has a chance to make their, we're going to have a gentle phase-in period. "The property owner may request in writing that duplicate monthly billings be sent to a designated location and/or individual. All requests for changes in such designation must be made in writing." We won't have a form, and we won't have the procedures that we had before that were in place. And his arguments, and I'll summarize those in a second, are quite to the point, and probably reflect the reality where 75% of our units are now rental property. In the olden days, you know, maybe 15%, 20%, you know, those were the days. So to propose this, he says, "We are a not-for-profit public utility established by the residents of the community to provide service at a minimum cost. Rental properties are for-profit businesses. We now provide free administrative services to for-profit operations. If we continue providing these services, landlords should be charged an administrative fee." And he goes on to talk about that issue. "Secondly, the administrative and services include a high frequency of turnover in customers at the beginning and end of each school, where we process several thousand accounts in and out of the system. And we have only a couple of people in that office, so you can just imagine the pressure that comes out of that. We have no choice in providing public services. Landlords choose the tenants. We are required to provide the service to whomever they choose." That's the part of the argument. "Tenants frequently leave without advising us of a change. We find out when the bill is not paid, or the new tenant requests a name change for service. Right now, when a tenant moves out, we do not know that they are delinquent and paying the final bill until after the landlord's 30-day timeframe for returning the deposit has expired." So in other words, we get involved in the interaction between the landlord and the tenant. And then he goes on to talk about the implications of House Bill 304. And the problem, the problems that we have, I don't think anybody in the state would have such a high level of rental property within their bounds. And the utilities billing office ends up probably, in addition to what he said, adjudicating some issues. I remember Sarah talking about the terrible time, Sarah Sexton, the terrible time she had, because her landlord had a five- or four-unit building, all paying, they're part of the utility bill, and it was just a royal mess, because as usual, people vary in their opinions on what is more important, and so the people that were more interested in getting the bill paid on time had the 10% penalty, and so on and so forth, and so. You know, just from the point of view of equity, it just seems like the way to do it, let the person who makes the money, this is one of our large businesses, as we see, let them pay, take, pay the cost, take care of the process. And that's the proposal he has. Any issues out there?
I have a question. Right, does this mean, then, that the billing would go, obviously, to the property owner, and they would be responsible for the payment of the bill?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's what it means. Yep. That's Cody's. That's what it is.
Right, why don't you make sure?
Okay.
It says that the property owner may request duplicate monthly billings, may request in writing. All changes for, all requests for changes must be made in writing. So, at the end of the year, if the property owner doesn't notify us, doesn't send us a letter that renters A, B, C are gone from these properties, then we're going to keep sending duplicate bills forever?
I think that's a very good question. I'll ask him what he intends to do. He said there's no additional substantial charge associated with it, you know, the...
There's some postage.
There is some postage, yes. And so maybe that's something we need to monitor. That would be in the case, you know, let's go back to that example where all of the five units are on a single meter, and they divide it 20%, so they, you know, it could end up being five different bills. You're absolutely right.
And you could go on for a long time.
For a long time, yes.
Okay.
I have another question.
Yes, okay, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, if the property owner is responsible for paying the bill, why would they want duplicate billings sent to the, to prove that they...
Because the property owner can indicate in his or her lease that renters are, renters must pay the utility bill, and so by having it sent to the attention of the person on the lease, and the property owner is passing that responsibility to the renter, however, we're holding him or her in...
Yeah, okay, because in the, in the top one it says, "The property owner will be notified if a bill for water charges is delinquent."
We're getting rid of that.
I know, we're getting rid of that. So I guess if the property owner is still passing along the water bill payment responsibility to the renter, what happens if there is some delinquent bill? I mean, it seems to me this is weaker.
Oh, but you should understand that there's a separate section that deals with delinquency and how we notify.
Okay, very good.
But basically, it's that the property owner is going to pay that bill and get it out of their renters.
Okay.
It's their responsibility.
And get us out of the picture.
Right, since this was missing in the new version, I just wanted to make sure we had that covered.
There's something called a red tag fee, and there's a 10% penalty, and it says so right on the bill, so it's going to keep our payment schedule on. When I first started on council, I think about a third or more of the bills were not paid in a timely fashion, so, I mean, we just, we just have to get more tightly specified as we get to more and more rental units, that's all. One more, go ahead.
Could there be a penalty for, I mean, I was just bringing up what Jim did, if, if new renters are not, well, once, once the renters leave the unit, then there'll still be duplicate bills sent to that, and there is some minor cost in mailing and everything else, and could there be a penalty for people who don't notify within three months or something?
I'll ask if he wants that administrative or in the ordinance itself.
Okay.
But he just, in our current utilities billing system, this works out. He said he put that in with the idea of having that happen.
Okay.
We had several examples, Debbie did a very nice job of researching it. We went back to the revised code, and it doesn't say that we can, we have to do it the way we did in 5.03, and so we've covered, I think, all the bases. So the money won't change, just the responsibility for collecting it changes, and gets us out of the picture, which isn't a bad idea. Anybody else? No problems? Can't see any, there won't be any differences that I can see at this point with that. Well, if there are none, then I'll have this up for first reading on Monday, next Monday. Let's see. You want to go ahead with yours, and then I'll do the leaf pickup? Paul, did you have something you wanted to say?
Spring cleanup miscellaneous?
Oh, okay, that'll come up, and I also have something else I have to do in miscellaneous. Bojinka has something she wants to say about that Debbie fobbed off onto my committee, so we'll see what she has to say.
Well, it fits right in with spring cleanup, actually. We've been talking a lot about the litter, et cetera, in residential areas and also uptown. And so, when I was at a meeting of the uptown business owners, one person mentioned that there used to be signs on some of the properties that indicated who managed it, so if people wanted to complain about dirty doorways, or litter, or something, they had a number to call. And that seemed to at least result in some action on their part to clean up. But now there are no signs, and so I'd like to suggest that maybe we pass an ordinance that says that rental property uptown have a little sign that basically says, you know, "Concerns, here's the person responsible, call." It's kind of like, similar to "How's my driving?" In other words, it's a way, you know, "How's my driving, call this." We might say, in a sense, you know, if some doorway is really dirty, and really is kind of an eyesore, then anybody walking by could look at the little note, and it would say, you know, "If you're concerned, call this person." And so we might have a little community, I want to say, community responsibility developed that way. So I would, I'd like to hear people's opinions of that, or whether people feel it's okay to bring it forward in some more formal way.
I don't think it's that effective myself, mostly because I think if you find it dirty, you can always just call code and say it's dirty. In terms of signage for property owners or anything like that, I think right now in the rental code, there is requirement of placard, rent, rental space, house.
Not uptown.
Not uptown, it's not required, you're saying?
It is, it is my understanding that there was an ordinance, and maybe the mayor can speak to this if you remember it, that signs were not allowed uptown. And I know that when I have thought, you know, I could make two phone calls, on the other hand, that's too much work. I'd rather jot down a number and call one and say, you know, "Your doorway, this is really disgusting, and so it'd be nice if you cleaned it up." In other words, it's a simpler way to do it. It is my understanding that, that those signs are no longer allowed, and we would have to pass an ordinance to institute something like that again.
I was under the impression the rental placards can be filed, or they can be put on the...
Those are occupancy standards.
Occupancy standards. Don't they have the name of the person who is running the...
I can't remember, I go by it. But I think that what's going on is a person who had to take down the signs on all of his dwelling units that said, "This place is for rent,"
Yes.
is the one that is pushing the idea.
So that's advertising.
No, no, I don't see this as advertising. I think I see it as a way of having citizens who are, you know, walking down the street and finding the place offensive, to alert the person that it's, that it's dirty.
The sign ordinance, anybody else who wants to jump in? I know the mayor has something to say, anybody, just jump, anybody.
Well, I think the occupancy requirements are posted inside the building, so that the, so that the people living there know what's required of them, but I am sure, just as Nancy pointed out, that our ordinance specifically says, "No, you can't have those little placards."
Correct.
And if we were going to do it, then I don't see why only rental business, rental places would be required, why not everybody? But then again, why not everybody in town? Why don't Nancy have one on her door, and me have one on my door, so people can call us?
Well, because it's not public space. I mean, I think...
Sidewalk in front is, you know, I'm just not sure that I'd want to go this way.
I don't have sidewalk, but that's okay.
It's kind of, it's a little intrusive, I think, but that's my feeling.
I've always been the anti-rental sign person, that I, I feel that it's a label that is not necessary. But the other thing that comes to mind from what you're describing is, I'm not sure that we want to get into a situation where local citizens are making a judgment call and calling landlords and commenting on their properties. I think that's a contentious, possibly contentious situation that could end up unpleasant from many standpoints. So I do feel that the best route is to call the code office, and the hope is that they will follow up on it. But just to have regular citizens calling up landlords and telling them what they think is wrong with their property, I'm not comfortable with that.
Well, I guess I was thinking that the citizens were not going, were going to be a little more responsible than that, and basically, there would be some sense of, of, you know, right now things are anonymous, and you don't really know. And calling the code office is one possibility, however, it's kind of a circuitous route. And I just thought that it might also inspire some people to take a little more pride in ownership, and, and encourage them to take a little more responsibility for the cleanliness of their, of their operations. And I imagined it to be small, and only a few people who really cared about what downtown kind of appeared would really use it. But, you know, I'm open to those suggestions, or I just thought I would bring it up as a way.
Can I look at the sign ordinance, too? Jim, that's listed to you. For future, no, just to continue on? Yeah, yeah.
Actually, Amy sent it over.
After you suggested that I get it the last time, I made a copy, and there it is.
I don't know if you'd ever get in touch with a person. I could see having that management sign up there, and you'd be answering, going to a machine or voicemail, and, you know, the button would just get deleted on the answering machine, and, you know, maybe it might be effective, maybe it won't, but, you know, it's in contrast with what Carol's talking about, that you'd be offensive to somebody, because I don't think you'd be talking to somebody after a while. I mean, really, if you have a pigsty, after a while, it's like, "I don't care, I'm just collecting the rent, and just, oh, I just get the messages," and maybe they get, you know, some kind of charge out of it, but at the same time, I don't think it's going to get the, the response you're seeking.
Okay.
At least that's, you know, what I'm seeing, you know, I could be wrong, we could try it.
Well, just a way of looking at, at other options in terms of keeping uptown a little more aesthetically pleasing and cleaner, and keeping people to higher standards. So we'll pass on it for the moment, huh?
And maybe ask Debbie to do some research for you on other people who require or suggest uptown cleaning.
Okay.
Be a possibility. I think there are some ordinances out there, we could look at those as a sequel to this, right?
Yeah, that's nice.
Now you know why Debbie didn't want it in her committee. Okay, so now I got my minutes up to date, and I'm on to my next item, and I'm going to try and make it by 7:30, so this'll be fast talk. Last year at this time, Jim and I were at a CFI meeting, Community Foods Initiative, and he had an estimate from Andy Stone, I think, of the cost, because we were trying to figure out if we go to compost, and what would be the next step, so on and so forth. And so just recently, we were in a meeting, and it was actually in the street tour, and we were talking about replacing a vehicle. And I think at that point, we talked about it, and so I would like to propose that we currently have a leaves and stick pickup that's free, I mean, we're all paying for it, but maybe it's time for us to do the following. Start to charge on a per-trip, per-unit basis for this currently free service. The cost could, the charge could be initially modest, as I recall, Jim, do you remember how much Andy had estimated it was? I also have another estimate from Ron Lucas on this. Somewhere in the vicinity, I thought it was more than this, we're talking about basically almost in November, one, a thousand, oh, actually, I could pass it out to you, since I have one for each of you, right?
He was estimating as much as $150,000 a year.
Right, and so there's a little difference here.
Including labor, machinery, maintenance, all that stuff.
So, and I, and I never saw it, I was, I was just thinking, "Oh, okay, maybe we need to do something about this." So when we saw the leaf truck, that was the, the leaf pickup truck, which is a multi-use truck, I will add, and we thought about this. Now, here are some things that I think would play into getting some money for this, and, you know, maybe this is pie in the sky, but we now have, at least I think we have, after we all ponied up a little bit of money, a uniform database, and we will have by the 1st of September, the landlords paying the cost, everybody not subcontracting the cost of their utilities. So it would be fairly easy to put that on the utility bill at that point in time, this cost, my hypothetical cost. Okay, so I don't have anything out in front of my house, but let's say I had four bundles of sticks, and the sizes are stipulated, and three bags of leaves. It would be a good thing if I did have it, but I don't, and so, you know, I would say, what would happen if we charged a dollar to come out, and, I mean, we would do it on two days and 50 cents for each parcel. Meanwhile, charge for getting rid of that material would be approximately, let's see if I can do the arithmetic, $4. If I put it out at the curb and put stickers on it, I would be paying $6, you know, as an overload on my garbage cans. So, plus, we would, so the payoff would be, we would be keeping it out of the landfill, putting it on our sludge farm fields, and so, and I know this is controversial, but I think when we were on the meeting, or when we were on the street tour, we were talking about this, this base charge and volume charge for this service, and possibly, although it's always nice to have a service, you know, it's also, some people use it a lot, and other people don't use it at all, and, you know, maybe this is a way to generate some income for that elusive other activity. We have to replace the truck, we should add the cost of replacing the truck over a four-year period, and so on and so forth, just as we would if we were running a garbage business. But this would go into the street fund, at least, as far as it's proposed. I know some people aren't hot on it, other people are. Debbie, what do you have to do?
I just wonder if there's any connection, any possible connection with the composting program that we've been working on and exploring.
Always, of course, there's a connection, a potential, yeah. I mean, because we won't be able to pick up compost for nothing. I mean, when we were, in the olden days, we picked up recycling for nothing for a time, but that was when it was a feel-good program, and it was subsidized by the ODNR. I mean, we're all, we have to pay part of the cost of processing the recycling. So any of these things that divert items, materials from the landfill, don't, aren't free, it's just that they reduce the cost overall, the overall cost is reduced. So what does that mean? Okay.
I don't think that...
That was just an observation.
The compost program isn't, you know, completely developed yet, but this is all stuff that is, you know, compostable, can be made into mulch, can be...
Which it is.
Things that are used, rather than just hauled away and disposed of.
Which is, which is what happens to it.
It is compostable, yeah.
Carol?
I have always felt that it was absolutely appropriate to charge for the service, and I certainly don't think that the rate that you're discussing is prohibitive, and I think it's a way to recover costs.
Joe, in my neighborhood on the east side, there are a lot of mature trees and a lot of mature citizens there, and I've spoken to several of us, and there's no objection to a modest fee for picking up these branches that are continually falling as we bundle them up, and leaves at the proper time of year, et cetera, et cetera.
It would stay much as it is, but the cost would be, or I mean, the programming could be by... be by phone or by computer, and it could be then on the utility bill, because they would have instigated it.
A detail about the leaves, the, they prefer now that leaves not be bagged, because they have the thing that comes along and vacuums them up. So might, might need to do a different-
Public relations?
Unit than, than bags on the leaves.
Well, I mean, if you go out and look in front of your house, there are bags out there right now, I mean, not in front of my house, but-
My understanding is that what they do is if the leaves are bagged and the, the street sweeper is coming, that they just empty the bags into the street and leave the bags, and they do not, would not charge for that service.
Yeah, and it drove my neighbors crazy.
Well, yeah, I understand that, because it's arduous to get them in the bags and then the ones that are dumped in the mail.
And I had to explain to them what was going on, but it, you know, it's difficult. Anybody on this side?
So what are you talking about, price per bag, right now?
50 cents?
50 cents per bag.
For a starter?
And the dollar was for the visit?
A dollar, you know, just as in, yeah, everything, we have the line charge and-
Right.
The dollars?
This is just swagging, guys, I have no idea.
The dollar's for what now?
A dollar is for the visit. It costs gasoline money and labor to drive out those two days they do it.
Okay, so $1 for the visit and how many bags, it would be 50 cents a bag?
Or a bundle.
Or bundle.
Bundle.
Okay.
And what about if we don't do the bags, though? What if there aren't bags?
I don't want to think about that.
All those leaves will be flying in the yards of people that just raked them and they'll be mad.
I have a neighbor that doesn't rake any leaves.
So a tarp o' broom or a net?
Yeah, I don't know. So I would also say that if we proceed with this, and we do have some time because of our changes in the utilities billing, but I think we have to say, give the administration latitude, if we have a, let's say, sheer wind event and there's a lot of trees down, those things will just have to get picked up and, I mean, I, that's for sure. But we'll have some more discussion on this later, this is just our first round. I have some estimates now from Ron. You all have an estimate in your hand and maybe we can talk about it next month. My last thing, miscellaneous, no, I have two miscellaneous things with my eagerness to get to the end of this at a half hour time period. The mayor handed me an email saying softener number three needs to be brought in with labor and materials, roughly $30,000 to replace the water softener. And those of you who could imagine our water without the softening could say, we really need this to happen. We'll have to put, take some of the money that you said was unappropriated, move it up, do you think, 200, 300, you said? This is, the mayor already handed me all the information, softener number three. Okay. No problem with that, I assume? We'll all have bad hair days if we don't have this happen. And then the last item on my agenda is from my neighbor. And I promised her I would do this, I talked to Gary about it. Unfortunately, the documentation is sitting on my desk, which is not a good place for it. But let me describe the situation to you and see if you can go along with a proposed solution. My neighbor has a house on Columbia Avenue that was, was, is a, it's a very nice house, it's a very old house, and the man who owned it decided he was going to subdivide it into three parcels. So he, and he probably couldn't do it today, because the parcels are small, but in 1902, the village of Athens gave him permission to put three lots there and a right-of-way. And it goes right through the house, and there's a nice big lot up on the top of the ridge, it's on the upper side of Columbia, just about Columbia and Highland. And so when one of my constituents paid her taxes, she realized that she had three parts and that there was a part that the city had, undeveloped, we inherited it from this early time. I asked Gary what we could do, I said, can we just rescind the ordinance of this pre-subdivision village? And he said, no, what you should do is just say, we will relinquish whatever claim we had on the right-of-way in exchange for her putting all three lots into a single, into a single parcel. Because you wouldn't want three lots, especially one behind that's landlocked, which was the main issue I was having trouble with. And it's Rich Island and it's right across from the, I'll have the, the description if you have any problems. She actually talked to Steve, to Ray, and to everybody in the county, and they all told her the same thing, that we had to do it. I didn't believe her, so I went and asked, I asked Gary and he said, yes, you have to do it, so. I mean, it isn't like, you know how I feel about rights of way, so it's kind of one of those things. But, so, anybody have a problem with that? I'll get you a map next time, see if you can see it. He said that's what he thought would be a good solution. No problems? No problems? Okay, I don't know how many more of these are lurking out there, we might find out later on. I'm going to adjourn then, City Services, yes.
Miscellaneous?
Oh, miscellaneous, I did my two miscellaneouses.
Spring cleanup.
Oh, spring cleanup, okay.
It's this week. Spring cleanup is this week. You can put as many bags as you want out on the curb on your pickup day. Anybody had pickup Monday has just missed it. The reason why I'm bringing this up is because I was trailing through the city website, trying to find one of these links that would tell us about it. The only one I found was on the south side, neighborhood association link. You'll be charged for anything outside of a bag by the cubic yard, but this is where you get a chance to throw as much stuff as you can out in a bag. And I know you've probably been saying this at your, you know-
For weeks now.
Okay. But some people still aren't getting it.
But for those that missed Monday, we do have-
The roll-offs.
The roll-off down at the service garage, somebody's there staffing, I think, till seven o'clock at night. You just have to be a city resident, so if you have, like, a small television or something that would normally go out and get an extra charge, take it down there and there's no charge. So you can avoid that if you've got the means of getting those items there, or if you, and that will run through Friday.
Okay.
And our trash routes only run through Thursday. So there's a second opportunity here.
Okay. Just so everybody knows. And I know you probably said it numerous times, but I just wanted to repeat it.
I can't say it enough.
Can't, can't, or?
Okay.
Okay.
Now we're moving on to committee of the whole, which I'm taking minutes on, but I don't know what else. Is that yours, Debbie?
Yeah.
Is it ours? Oh, is it Jim's, with expansion of the Community Foods Initiative? Does anybody know?
No. Why is it on the agenda?
Because no one knew to take it off.
I imagine there's something out there, but I, I don't know. She gave me minutes, Debbie gave me minutes to take. Composting expansion?
Just saying, we think it's a good idea.
Yay, okay. All right. That was a quick one, planning and development, there you go.
Wow, okay. Well, I'm going to convene the meeting of the Planning and Development Committee, and first on our agenda is our annual report from the Chamber of Commerce. And I think everybody got a handout from Jennifer.
Good evening. This, I'm going to be very brief, because I know you have a long agenda this evening, but I did give you the report, and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank again the council for approving the contract with the Athens Area Chamber of Commerce to provide economic development services, for us to be able to provide economic development services to the city. And again, we have a contract with the county that allows us to do the same. And the focus of that contract is to do several things. Of course, retaining and expanding existing businesses, attracting new businesses, and fostering entrepreneurial development. So the, the report that you have before you is going to highlight our accomplishments in 2005, talk about some of the good news and some of the bad news in 2005, and to outline our plan for 2006, which since we're four months into it, we have a pretty good idea whether or not we're going to be able to do those things. The first thing, this year, we've assisted Jim Coatings, which is located in our Post Industrial Park. They expect to create 50 jobs within three years. I was in the facility this past week and they are way beyond that, so we're very happy about that investment. They are moving forward in that building. We've also brought several leads through the soon-to-be McVeigh facility, which the last person is out this Friday from that facility, including two call center businesses, a light manufacturing company, and a few local companies who have shown interest in developing and expanding and possibly being able to grow into part of that space. We've assisted with environmental remediation at Columbia Gas Building and the property for redevelopment. Of course, when I say assisted, I don't mean that we were out there with our white suits and gloves and all of those things. We've just been a conduit for information related to that, to that particular project. We've made approximately 600 visits and that's contact with businesses. It may be two or three to the same one, but we've, we've been out there beating the streets and, and talking with folks about their business and what's working and what's not. We've launched an entrepreneurial development group, including groups like the Winovich Center, ACE Net, et cetera, where we look at all the technical and financial assistance programs that the, that Athens County provides in order to become more efficient and effective in what we're doing for those small businesses. So far, it's a networking group, but we look to be able to take it into a next phase. We've launched a new website, same address, just a new site, athenschamber.com. We had 2 million hits in 2005 and I think we had 1.2 in 2004, so we felt like that has, has grown. We have more services up there. We have more community statistics, our industrial, commercial, and retail properties are listed, press releases, et cetera. So we're trying to use that as more of a, an opportunity to communicate information into the community. We continue to work with the Regional Technology Council to network existing technology companies here in Athens and throughout the surrounding counties. We, through that process, created a website and a brand. We attended a trade show in Philadelphia last year, Bio 2005, and we have one contact that we work, are working with diligently that has come out of that particular visit. We also, it's not here, but you, in this report, but you should know, as you probably followed, Senator Winovich recently visited the Grid Lab, the game research and immersive design lab, basically games. And it's not just the fun games, it's the, the learning games, which are supposed to be fun, and the serious games. And basically, that lab is now up and running. We, two years ago, helped secure a grant for that, and now they are moving forward. And as you know, this past week, an announcement was made about a company called Game Plan. It's now in Athens in the Innovation Center. They hope to grow to 25 people within the next couple of years. So we're seeing some synergies related to those technologies. We also sold over last year $115,000 in gift certificates, and that is part of our buy-local program. Obviously, the money stays here, our merchants see the value in that. Over the last four years, we have sold $417,000. Through our workers' compensation program, we've assisted 54 businesses in saving over $270,000 in premiums in 2005, which is up from $179,000 in 2004. Again, it allows companies to be able to keep more of their money here, to be able to reinvest in employees and reinvest in new products. We've been working with our retail development partners to create additional opportunities. University Mall is obviously one of those opportunities that we have been working with Brent Hayes and Tom Parfit on. I'm excited to hear that they continue to work with the farmer's market on opportunities related to that particular project. Obviously, the benefit is that it is a community-driven project and that we'll be able to have a mixture of opportunities for, for the local community. We've provided assistance in the expansions of Holzer Clinic and with Oak Linus. We've developed Leadership Athens in conjunction with our partner, the Athens Foundation. It's an educational and networking program for new and emerging community and business leaders. The first class is set to begin this fall, we're excited about that. Just hired a coordinator through the foundation, through some funds we were able to secure in order to move this, this project forward. Also, we continue to serve as a liaison with the city and county on issues relevant to businesses. We've managed the Enterprise Zone Program for the county and the city, and while that's currently pretty small, Mayor, we only have one active, one active agreement on Enterprise Zone Program. Now I want to talk a little bit about the good news in 2005. One, which I can't believe, I forgot to put this on there, but as soon as Lance asked me what I was going to talk about today, it became pretty obvious. I know that most of you did the tour at University Estates this past year, and roads were open and, and lights were along the streets and trees were up and landscaping was done and houses are starting to be built. That's good news. And we're going to hear, of course, more about that in, in a little bit. Other good news kinds of things, Edmap in Nelsonville has gone from 55 employees in '04 to 80 in 2005. Diagnostic hybrids from 144 in 2004 to 180 in 2005. Holzer Medical Clinic's going to begin their construction over the next year or so on their brand-new facility. The Grid Lab we talked about, smaller businesses, Abrio's Village Bakery, Themes moving to Court Street where they have a greater presence, there's now some synergy related to Bali Karma, Succulent Sundays, and that end of Court Street is starting to see some, some, I think, some pretty vibrant small business activity, some unique Athens-type of businesses. So, the bad news. Continued layoffs in 2005 at the McVeigh facility, and as, as I said earlier, the ultimate bad news being the closing, which will happen this week. And stores that have moved from University Mall, I think the bleeding may have ended with goodies, but however, we know goodies has moved into the Athens Mall space. But the bad news, with both of those instances, though, I think we're, when we look at them, there's opportunity. And over the next year, when you look at our plan, I think we're, we're laying out some strategies to be able to deal with both of those pieces. One, to provide services and benefits to assist in retaining and expanding our chamber member businesses. To make 25 in-depth retention and expansion company visits with public officials, we've done some of those. I know the mayor has been in on a few conversations with businesses, but we want to have a more structured questionnaire as we're meeting. We've done some of these through work, in relation to workforce development, they've been very positive, we really get to issues rather than how's business, you actually ask some of the questions about, you know, what are your needs? Again, Leadership Athens, we will be implementing that program this year. Partner with the city to develop an easily-understood development flow chart, so that both citizens and businesses fully understand how the process works. I know Debbie's been, had helped us get that started, Steve Pearson is working on, on that, and Steve and I have a meeting in a week or so to sit down and, and start that so we can report back to the group. We want to continue to operate as the first stop and the go-to organization for business information. Obviously, one of the measures is increased media attention, increased business inquiries and public inquiries. We want to facilitate a full business and education partnership. We have that, we have started that with all of the superintendents in the county and some of our businesses. We had a couple of meetings where there have been 20 or 30 folks at each one of those businesses, at each one of those events, so we find that it's something, obviously, that people want to be involved in. And I think we've said enough about University Mall. Last year, I provided to you a socioeconomic profile of Athens. This year, our employment rate, unemployment rate, excuse me, in 2005 went up slightly. In 2006, it seems to be maintaining that same, same average at 6.3%. Poverty rate in Athens, of course, is, is done through the census and, obviously, that hasn't changed, but it continues to be one of those red button items that we all need to be very conscious of as, as we look at how we relate to the rest of, of the Appalachian region and the rest of the country. Per capita income, we're slightly higher in our per capita income, however, we're still only 64% of the United States per capita income. Population, we're down slightly, 2004 over 2003. However, if you look at the next little chart, the migration chart, the outmigration has, has lowered and inmigration has increased, so we may see those numbers pop back up slightly. Wages, I put this in just so you have an idea. Obviously, both the number of employees and number of wages is up. Healthcare jobs are on the rise and construction jobs are on the rise. Arts and entertainment and recreation remain somewhat stable, and obviously, the state government, local government numbers, sometimes they decide to report those and sometimes they decide not to. So in, in 2002, they reported, in 2003, they stated not, so I don't have that number. So I would entertain any questions that you may have.
So if, I haven't checked your website lately, I know you have a list of all the different types of retail and businesses and manufacturing areas, and that's fairly up to date, since I haven't checked it out.
Yes.
In terms of the Innovation Center, is that- In terms of the Innovation Center, is that full? Where is that in comparison with capacity?
She's completely full. I think she may have, Linda Clark at the Innovation Center, I think she may have 1,000 square feet, but I think for the most part, she's completely full, and I think this last company, this newest company that's come in has really built her up.
And I assume you're in the midst of watching what's going on with the county engineers' property? Okay. And the other question I have is TS Trim, what's going on with that? Is that stable, flatline, or what?
I assume it's stable. The last conversation I had was about a month or so ago, and I've actually had an inquiry from a local business who wants to know about being able to utilize some of their space. They have this 85,000-square-foot building. However, they are not budging on wanting to go up any of the space. They use it primarily for warehousing, some of their existing product. They still have about 24 people employed there. So, it's not shutting down, but currently, there are things being stored there and, you know, products not being produced.
Offhand, do you know what the Columbia Gas size is?
The Columbia Gas property is about 16 acres, I'm going to guess.
I just wondered. Okay. Thanks.
Could you say a little bit more, maybe describe in a little more detail, your plan for 2006, provide services and benefits to assist in retaining and expanding some of your business, local businesses? What kinds of things are you doing there?
Sure. There are a couple of things. Through the Chamber portion of what we do, of course, we continue to offer services like a pooled workers' comp program where we can save folks quite a bit of money. We have a health insurance program. On the other side, which is our traditional economic development items, it may be that someone's expanding and they're looking for 10,000 more square feet. We help line them up with those resources if there are existing properties out there. We make those connections. Really, the best thing for us to do, Bajinka, is to go and sit down and ask them just a whole litany of questions, and that's where we really find out what their needs are, and then we're able to respond to those, so.
I didn't know if that was some marketing push or helping them with marketing their businesses.
We do some of that, but there are ACENet, for example, and the Voinovich Center. It gets back to kind of our entrepreneurial development group. We all have our niche of what we do for entrepreneurs, so we're trying to do a better job of, okay, if you have that issue, I can point you to the direction of ACENet, and they have that as a service, or the Voinovich Center, for example. So, we're trying to solidify that network a little bit more so that we can match people up with the... It's amazing how many opportunities there are for businesses to get assistance in this community. It's phenomenal.
Yeah. I was going to say, is that for existing businesses too, or are those centers more for business, you know, innovation or new businesses?
Both. Existing businesses, same thing. I think some folks, we even have them say, you know, "I'm in a rut," or "I've been in a rut, and I need to look at doing something differently," or they just want to increase their sales in some way. The, again, the Voinovich Center has done an excellent job through, now I know, all of the MBA students have a requirement of going through this program where they provide direct service to businesses, so that's something we will obviously be taking advantage of.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question about the McB facility. I guess it's just more curiosity as to how many jobs you're looking to possibly generate with these active leads, or if you have any information on that?
We don't have exact job numbers yet, of course, until someone has signed on the line and they're in the building. You know, you can only speculate about what they plan to do. I don't think we're far enough along in any of those leads to be able to give a definitive, this is who's coming, this is what they want, the process they're going to have. Obviously, our goal would be to bring that, those job numbers back up to the 360 jobs that were lost from McB.
Right. That's what I was wondering. Okay. Thank you.
I would also like to hear, I know there's been some discussion about trying to find a suitable place for diagnostic hybrids, and hear if there's any progress you can share about that.
We continue to work with diagnostic hybrids. They have obviously outgrown the space that is at the Innovation Center, Paul, so there will be more space one day available for additional clients. We have looked at a number of solutions with them to be able to say in a public forum what those solutions are right now, I think would be inappropriate. They haven't nailed down what they want to do yet. So, you know, we continue, I know when I was hired, as part of the interview process, one of the county commissioners said to me that, "You're here to keep diagnostic hybrids here." So, I knew I had more to do than that, but that has definitely taken up quite a bit of time over the last couple of years, and it's a company that we know we do not want to lose, the quality of jobs that it provides, you know, are bar none, and to be able to show an example of a company that has come out of innovation through the university is pretty critical. So, I, long answer, but, I mean, the short of it is that we continue to work with them. You know, just had a conversation with their attorney today, so we just have stayed on it. It's a daily conversation.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda for planning and development is a little bit of an update about University Estates. As you know, the annexation process is moving forward. The public hearing is scheduled for this Thursday at the Planning Commission, and Lance Rep. is here this evening to give us a little bit of an update and talk about where that process is. He brought some visuals.
The process has been going through the Planning Commission, and the first thing we did was a minor plat change. We had some changes on the roads. You can see by the blue dots, every blue dot is an area that was actually changed. This road was changed a little bit because it originally came up through there. The engineers, and when we met with the city, we felt it was safer if this looped all the way around, instead it had two, before it had two cul-de-sacs that stopped. One cul-de-sac would have been very long, so we felt with the independent living condos right there and the health center below it, it was just safer if that road went all the way through there. So, when you do that, obviously, that's a minor change that has to be brought forward. This piece of property right here on this dot is the old house, Hope House there that we since acquired after we went through the Planning Commission. So, we're just taking a third of that into this lot and two-thirds of it into Lot 2 here. So, that was the reason for that. This change right here was the gas company. When we came through there, we had to meet a 45-degree crossing angle. We were like 43.6 or something, so they wouldn't approve it, so we had to go back and change that degree of that crossing there, which just slightly alters, you know, the path if you're radius of turns. So, that was the reason for that. We made one change on the golf course, so that's with, from the High Club and University Estates property switch. So, that was the update on that. The Planning Commission voted to approve all that, so we're in the process of getting that plat and updating it. The other thing that Debbie mentioned, there was a public hearing Thursday, is for the zoning that, in the annexation process, when it comes in, you have to bring the zoning that's going to be with the project all at one time. So, that's what the public hearing is after that hearing. Then, I believe, it comes to council, and we actually have another hearing on that. As far as the development goes, we're clear up here, the water tower's in. Water and sewer have been inspected by the city. The roads are paved, streetlights are up and everything. We hope to have our first resident moving in in probably about three weeks. The only thing we're lacking right now is the completion of the phone service, and they're in the process of doing that now, bringing the phone lines up. Shortly, we'll be making some announcements, a little additional announcements. Once on High Point Village was the healthcare center and retirement condos, independent living condos. A couple of these sites, we've got some pretty good prospects on. Construction's already started on getting the independent condos going. We're clearing and starting to put in some sanitary and roads and stuff. The golf course has already been through the wellhead protection thing with Egan, so we're all approved, ready to go on that. There's a couple of things that we have to do as we proceed when we get our final plans for the maintenance building. That's already dealable. The Armitage Road, the old road, is pretty well complete. We're moving it down to here, and it's complete about right there now, so we're just, got a little bit of section. If the weather stays good, I'd say we're going to do that. At that point in time, we'll probably vacate the old road, and then we use it into a private road situation to get to some of these cul-de-sacs. You can see by the different colors the zoning that we're bringing in. We're still working with Mayor and Steve on a couple, whether it should be B1 or R3s, and so that's a couple of issues, but that's kind of it in a nutshell. I don't see anything that... I just, again, welcome anybody that wants to, the public, or anybody, the roads are paved now, so you can come up and view everything, and we've got a sales officer there that I can answer any questions, and so I just wanted to take a few notes.
And part of the reason for beginning this conversation now, as you know, the timeline for the annexation process is fairly tight. We need to have the annexation approved by July 17th, so after the Planning Commission has their hearing and makes their recommendation, we will need to have a hearing that has to have 30 days' notice before that public hearing. So, there are a lot of things that have to happen between now and then. We thought it was a good opportunity to let folks take a look at this. So, if you have questions, we can take a little time to do that.
Paul, so everything, past the water tower's Phase 2 and 3, Phase 2, is it?
Right.
Okay. And I noticed you have a lot of cul-de-sacs that are multi-family unit zoning. Is that...
Yeah, we've tried to, as we build out through, you know, it's still a little early to 100% tie down exactly what, you know, is going to sell the best. So, we've tried to leave room in our planning that allows us to have some more multifamily, if that's what the trend is by the time we get there, or these multifamily can easily be extended into single family, if there's more demand for single family. So, it's kind of...
Okay. I just ask, because looking at from here, which is further back than, I think, last time I started, I realized that would be, you'd have quite a bit of traffic flow in a cul-de-sac because of multifamily. Is that going to be a problem, or are the roads going to be widened?
That's one thing that we've considered, and again, as we go by here, this could easily go to all multifamily, this could all single family, and we've just tried to, you know, part of going through the Planning Commission and stuff is your density, so we have to show what the density is going to be, so we thought that's the best way to do it.
And did the wellhead protection plan of the golf course require any monitor wells in place, put in place?
Part of the proposal, or not proposal, the study from Egan says that there is one test well now, which is located next to the radio tower, and that at some point, we need to review whether a second monitor is needed or well, and that would be slightly southeast, southwest of the radio station.
But nothing along the golf course area, so?
Well, I guess, here's the existing tower here. There's a test well right there, a monitoring well right now. The Egan report says somewhere down in this area, so that would be, that would be southwest of it.
Would that be your well or our well, Lance?
Probably our, the our well.
Your well, and you report to us the results? Is that what it is?
You know, I think Egan would be monitoring all those when they do the test on the wells.
I was just wondering who was going to pay for it. That was more the question. Okay. Something to work on. Jim?
You said the Planning Commission public hearing is this week, this Thursday?
Yeah, this Thursday at 2:30.
And that's, at that point, you will be firming up your zoning designations by that point?
Actually, that's just a public hearing, right, Mayor, and then we come back to the Planning Commission after the public hearing.
They have made a proposal of zoning. We will just, for any of the publics there, review what that proposal is and ask for public comment. Then, the next regular scheduled meeting, the Planning Commission, will be the first Thursday in May. We can then, it's the first time we can legally act on it. We can modify it, discuss it more with the developer, take into account the public comment that we've had, and make a recommendation that will come to you, and then you get to do it all over again.
Okay. Thank you. So, if I'm reading the activity reports correctly, you've had somebody out there checking the construction of the streets and the engineering of all that?
Yeah.
Okay. And that's on their dime or our dime?
It's been on ours at this stage. It's basically Andy or, when he was here, we'd go out about once a week, check its critical nature in times. Technically, we can't accept the roads yet because it's not in the city, although they've requested it be accepted, and the maintenance bond, until it's annexed, it's really in the county. But in preparation of it being in the city, we've gone ahead. When that, when, you know, the sewer inspection that we did was primarily, I guess, one of our employees would go over it periodic times, and depending upon what they were doing, and make sure everything was packed in right and properly, et cetera. And we have, we've kept record at that time.
And that concludes the new Armitage Road position?
Actually, that's a township.
No, that's a township road.
And the county engineers. We had a meeting with the county engineer, township trustees, and Wayne, and I don't know if Andy was around at that time or not, but we all agreed on what the road needed to be and the standards and everything, and then what the inspection process would be. So, it's kind of a group effort on that.
And hopefully, that will avoid some of the problems that we've encountered with other projects where we find out later that roads weren't built really to an adequate standard. So, I think it's really good that we've had folks out there looking at this and making sure that they're going to be up to a standard before we accept them for the city to maintain.
One thing on our project that I would like to note is that when Paul asked about Phase 2 and 3 and everything, other than making some minor decisions on the multifamily, single family and stuff, everything else is just an extension of what we've already done. You know, the sewer, the water, the storm, all that kind of stuff was approved for the whole project with a master plan. What we've done to here, we will continue to do on out at the same standards and everything. So, all that kind of stuff is really, is kind of a continuation of what we've been doing all along.
I would be remiss if I didn't ask, where is the access to the bike paths? What points would you have there?
Okay, well, which map? Probably that. The Elks sits about right in here, and right behind the Elks is the old railroad trussel that the city now owns, all the way out there, the old grove and our crossing right there. Eventually, our plans, and we've talked to the mayor, is we would like to maybe apply for a grant to go across that bridge. At that point in time, our bike path will start right here, comes up, and follows the dark black line there on University Estates Boulevard, comes all the way back down around to where Armitage Road, and then the Courier Street Bridge is right in here, and then we would tie in right at the end of our... And then we would tie in right at the end of our property. So they cross the river on our side of the property.
The nature of most of the right-ofways you have, Armitage had a series of bridle paths and stuff like that, that would be exclusive for horses, is that what I'm hearing?
Right. Which is the best map for that? I think this one shows it the best. See, there's a 50-foot right-ofway there and there. There's one there, there. You can see there, we've got a crossing there. But the point is that no matter where you buy a lot on this property, you will be able to access all the green space without going across someone else's property. And that's why we've kind of designed it so you can tie it in. Of course, the golf course is the lighter green there.
I was at a meeting, a neighborhood meeting, again, the West Side, who is still concerned about the golf course. And I assume that since Egan's done the study, that they find you're going to be using what to make it safe?
Pretty much non- or organic chemicals or fertilizers and stuff. The program we put together, Egan did a lot of work with our golf course expert, Mike McBride, who was the superintendent of near field for twenty-seven years. It's in a full report, and we feel very comfortable about it. I think we've done more of our homework. Like I said, there's still a few issues that the process calls for us to present the maintenance building when we get better plans, you know, for engineering plans. We feel very confident in what we've done.
Nancy?
I think that's good news, Lance. Could you possibly get a copy of that to the public library, the Egan study? Is there, it isn't proprietary in any way, is it?
No. Actually, Nancy, that belongs to the city.
Okay. Well, maybe we could get it to the library, then people with other issues could, I mean, I think that they'll feel more confident about this if they know what you just said is good news. But, you know, they'll see it in that other public venue.
I know when I tried to get a second copy, I had to go through the city.
We have a Xerox machine, lots of machines. Sometimes, I can even sometimes get them to work.
The point is, you can do that.
I know, I know. That's, I'll do it. My other question has to do with water lines that might be in the old Armitage Road. Are the pews and other people that are down there?
They're on wells.
They're on wells? There's no, there's no Leax line that goes back there?
No.
Even where Bargain Billy was?
No.
No?
To my knowledge, the first crossing of the railroad tracks, those people right there might be on Leax, but it doesn't go any farther than that.
Okay.
About 100%.
And how are they fed, though? Aren't they fed down the old, oh, the old Armitage Road? Okay. I was concerned, I guess I've always been concerned about removing the old Armitage Road because of its relationship with the slope, and I'm glad you're leaving it in there. I mean, just because of what I, but the other thing is, is there any service line in there when you're talking about abandonment? And that's a question we'll ask when you come with that plan.
Right. Actually, there is phone lines and stuff. We've met with the phone company. There's the phone line and the cell lines. That's for that tower that's up there at Bellis Place. We've decided they're deep enough, and since we're not removing the old Armitage Road base, we're not going to affect it any there.
That's good news.
Now, the electric that goes through the middle of the golf course will have to be moved over to the new Armitage Road.
That's better.
Okay. Any other council members? Anyone here in the audience would like to ask a question or two? Okay. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Helping us be up to speed.
You're welcome to stop by any time.
As soon as we get a recommendation from the planning commission, I'm going to ask Debbie to go ahead and advertise the public hearing so that we can have that clock ticking while we go ahead and begin our committee process, just to make sure we get through this in a timely way. So. The next thing on Planning and Development Committee is, there's an issue that's been raised about the building code. There have been some changes in state law. The mayor has some information about whether we are going to have to do anything with our code to respond to the new state law around building code.
What's happened is the state of Ohio changed its higher revised code for one, two, and three-bedroom, or three-apartment complex, i.e. everything under a commercial, not under a commercial designation. They wanted to make that a standard for the state. Some municipalities or townships have variations to their building codes that meet what their perceived local need is. And they'll have a building department that then enforces those regulations. And there are certain positions that must be in that. We've never had a building, from a construction standpoint, inspection department. We have a housing code inspection office. But within our code in 230201, back in 1989, I think, or '87, the city, in essence, in that section, said, "The city code has adopted the Boca Basic Building Code of 1987, published by the Building Officials and Code Administers International, Inc., together with some specific modifications as listed in the next sections," or as comments. What that does now is, the state law says, if you're going to adopt a building code, then you have to, you have to conform to ours. Since there is now a statewide code, it was code director's idea to say, "We don't have a building construction department," is, "Let's eliminate that section and just refer to what the state law is." And otherwise amend that. And in talking with the prosecutor's office, Mike Miller there recently said, "If we had residential building regulations, they must be brought in line with the new state standards." And we're not required to have a building department, but to enforce the state standards. But if we wanted to, it would take, you know, they would continue to work on it. But if you remember the last year's report, until we get to University Estates where there's a lot of lots, I think seven new houses that fell into this got built in the whole city last year. We can't charge enough to hire the expertise to review and do those. So our recommendation is, let's just bring ourselves into code and refer to the state code now rather than the Boca code in that section.
Okay. So we can bring that forward next time? And there's a deadline for coming into compliance with that?
May 26th is, I believe, is when the, or May 27th is when the state law goes into effect. I feel if we don't, we miss it by a couple of weeks. I mean, they get 90 days to get into law, so we only take 30. So I just think if we're processing and moving forward with this, I don't think, nobody's going to cite us for it.
Well, if we feel that we need to, we could suspend it second reading and...
Sure.
Does anyone have any miscellaneous items for Planning and Development?
Carol? I just have a thought item. And it came from a conversation with somebody at Code. We've talked before about how do we get people to pay their rental permit fees in a timely way? And I think that's something that we should be thinking about. I know that Paul suggested at one point that we say, you know, "You don't get your rental permit if you don't get it on time." And the problem with that from Code's standpoint is that then they've got some residents that end up on the street, and I'm not sure that's the effect that we want. We want to bring the landlords in line, not necessarily punish some residents that are living in those. But there were some other ideas that I talked about a little with them, and one of them is just enacting an interest rate for late payment, and then after a certain date, it doubles. So those are some things that we might consider. But I think that it's just something we need to continue to try to figure out a way to get it enforced and get those in in a timely way. There's still some that aren't in.
Do you have any idea how many?
No.
I asked, I actually sent an email and asked, and they said they got all of last year's done, close to the end of last year. You know, because it just takes forever. I think you're absolutely right, Carol. I asked Gary if we could do it, add 10% every two months or something? He said, "Sure."
Right.
"We can do it." He said, "But you better watch it, because you still have to collect it."
Well, right.
And, you know, and I think that's a great idea. And I just, I was looking for my emails, probably not...
Well, and one of the things that was said was that it seems to be redundancy, that the same people are delinquent every year. So there needs to be something done that would affect the people we want affected, and that is the landlord, not the tenants.
Jim?
So currently, there, there's no penalty for late payment?
How about since you sent out the first of March, and then each interval after that, maybe something on that. But that's what we did with the water bills. If you don't get paid within 10 days, you get 10%. So we charge annually.
Who wants to be the...
Amy?
I just had a question about how much the rental permits are.
Depends on, it's $90 for a single-family house right now?
$90 per unit.
Per unit.
It's just $99.
Right. I remember seeing the sheet over.
Paul?
I'd like to see more than 10% and go up. I have no problem with taking the renters and putting them at OUN and charging the landlord until they do pay.
Okay.
Put a lien on the property. If they're delinquent, you could always say the next year you don't get your permit, so they have plenty of time to empty that house out. My idea is that no money coming in.
Well, and I think something like that's feasible, but you can't just say, "Okay, you didn't pay it on the day, your tenants are out." Because suddenly, we have to take them in, you get some, and I get some.
Okay. So I would, at this point, say, "I have no problem with the 10% increasing monthly," and then at some point, you don't get your permit for the next year.
How about if we start off with the penalty, you know, like 10%, 10%, and research the other thing?
What's $9 extra each year, each month?
Each month, yeah.
What's the court, what is it per month these days for rent? Is that really going to hurt them?
Well, I mean, it's, I don't know that it's, I mean, I'm just saying that the penalty about yanking the permit is what I'm concerned about. I would like to see the penalty there, because there's an incentive to get it paid in a timely fashion.
And then something about non-renewal, but we could look into options. We could work on putting in place the penalty now for late payments.
Can that penalty be higher than 10% though?
Well, I mean, with the 10%, that's $9 a month. In 10 months, it doubles.
True.
Per unit.
I do. I pay a lot of money for where I live. And I think that, you know, if they're not paying their rental permit on time, there certainly needs to be, I'd say, a severe punishment. And if that's...
Slogging public...
Well, I'm just saying, there's no reason why those rental permits shouldn't be paid, you know, in the beginning.
No, except it's the city, right?
Sure. But I think that, I mean, 10%, I mean, $9 a month, I certainly echo those. I mean, what is that? That's a...
Well, naming them.
That's per unit, right? You get 10 units, it's $9.
Well, I think it's something that we've got to work with the law director on a little bit in terms of what's plausible.
I'll try to flow in my email to you.
You have some fodder now, some stuff to work with, ideas to kick around.
If it starts the first of March, I mean, you know, the thing is, it gets attention immediately. There's some people who'll say, "Oh, it's the city act, and let it drag." Guess what? What happens?
Well, except that when it's the same people every year, obviously, it's just...
Except if it's the same people, you just let their water bills go, too.
Okay. Any other miscellaneous items for Planning and Development? I guess I would just like to ask, I saw Dale Tamkey's column in the paper today about the comprehensive plan, and I wonder if we know anything yet about when we expect to get that referred to us from the planning commission?
No idea. There's no update from what I've told you before. It's being retyped. It's physical time of...
I don't have any other miscellaneous items, so I think we're on to finance and personnel.
Finance and personnel. We have one item on our agenda. It's a discussion of a recommendation from our personnel director, Beverly Henderson, to add, excuse me, add an injury leave clause to the non-union ordinance. This would be a wage continuation program. Currently, employees who are injured and are off the job more than eight days need to file a claim with the Bureau of Workers' Compensation. When a claim is filed at the BWC, a reserve fund is set up by the commission, and the employer, the city, is billed based on those reserves for the next four years. This wage continuation program allows the employer, which would be the city, to pay the wages of this injured employee and not make a claim to the workers' compensation. So it actually saves us money in the end. And this is actually upon recommendation of the Bureau's, of Bureau of Workers' Compensation that they're asking us to consider this. This would be an employee who is injured and is off work for more than eight days in less than 12 weeks, which adds up to 480 hours. Actually, this benefit is included in the current police contracts that we've just approved. And this is not the first contract that has had it in. They've had it for a while. We have included with personnel director's recommendation, a proposed ordinance that is almost word for word based on the police contract, just changing some of the names and that. So are there any questions? That's the basic. I think everybody got a copy of the recommendation and the proposed ordinance. This would also allow an injured, we hope that it allowed injured worker to come back to work sooner. This, once it's set up, this compensation continuation would be more flexible than a workers' compensation claim. If an employee was able to come back to work and needed to leave for continuing doctor's programs or therapy sessions, this could apply to that, where it would not apply in a workers' compensation case. So it has not been used very much in the, in the police department. So this is a recommendation of the personnel director that we add this to the non-union pay ordinance and pass that benefit on to these employees also. Mayor, did you have anything to add to that?
Unless you have questions.
Okay. So we'll bring this up for first reading of an ordinance next Monday. Any questions or concerns, we can talk about it then. Beverly would be happy to come and talk to us also. Miscellaneous, the mayor has given me copies to pass out of one of his favorite financial reports, first quarter, quarterly, quarterly revenue and expense comparisons. So I'm going to pass those out. And Mayor, would you like to mention anything in particular about the first quarter?
It was pretty well on target from a couple of, you know, revenue standpoint. Overall, we were at 26%. We should be at 25. We're a little below on the expenditures overall, but all within the 20, low 20s. There are a couple of things that may, you may find when you go through there that might jump out. But one of the reasons I like this report is it goes back to 1999, so you now have seven years of it. And so you can see how the apartment has changed over that time period, or our revenue sources have been changed. The top page, I'll have to admit to one mistake, under street rehab, the budget should be $542,000, not $842,000, which changes the percentage to about 24%. So I caught that on my final review after I'd already printed it, and I thought it was minor enough that I wouldn't bother reprint all that. So I think the best thing is just take a look at it, give me a call if you have a question or another finance committee need. A couple of you want to get in more depth in it, we'd be more than happy to do that.
Mayor recommends contacting him... Okay. Mayor recommends contacting him once you've had a chance to review this, any questions or concerns. I don't have any other miscellaneous, Mayor?
Could we go back just for a second? I just was, you know, as a member of the Plan, Planning and Steering Committee, I was wondering, Mayor, if we could receive from the Planning Commission when they, I didn't realize that was, the retyping was going on, and kind of, you know, just going, "Oh, my goodness." If we could have a list of any changes that were made, you know, substantially, is it the same?
There really isn't very many changes that are made. It's mostly what, one of the things the Planning Commission would refer, you remember the document being, what's it, 150 pages long? And a lot of it that's in there is background material and survey work and justifications for different things. What they wanted to do was refer to those as appendixes and try to get that plan down to 50, 60 pages. So somebody could really read it, so it could be a working document.
For them, yeah.
So a lot of what we're doing is just really clerical in nature, but yeah, we will point out where any of those are. But no recommendations have been changed. It's mostly a format thing with us, because we're the ones that are going to have to work with it, along with council, too. But it usually hits the Planning Commission first and the administration. And we want something that can be on our desk and we can refer to on an easy basis.
I just want, you know, I just want to make sure, just in the spirit of changes to any code where we know, because we have, I have seen in my tenure, a few words here and a few words there, and you have a pretty different meaning, not in your administration, but in some others I can think of.
You don't have to teach me that, I don't care.
Oh, I'm mad if you have the fine art. I just haven't detected it yet.
Any other comments or questions? That closes the Finance and Personnel Committee for now.
And the Arts and Recreation Committee, the first thing on the agenda is Stroud's Run. I am sending to you a copy of some financials from the mayor and a little, here, wait. A little packet, just to, to talk about what we need to do in the process. The pages of my little packet are in the wrong order, so I'll be explaining that as we go along. I got a little over excited at the machine and ended up with pages in the wrong order. So the first thing to look at is the Stroud's budget. This is a simplified budget just to take out '07 and what the cost would be in terms, and this is very similar to the budget you got before. The actual personnel cost is down a little bit from the estimate that you had in your previous packet. The total supplies and materials is exact, and so the mayor came up with a total operating cost of $93,000. And then he sent me an explanation of the capital budget, project budget, 5% of projected revenue, a budget theory of putting 5% of current estimated revenue into a capital reserve. Then there, if there's any revenue left after all expenses are paid, it's added, added to the capital reserve. So that is the explanation for that particular number. So just take a minute to glance through this. It is very similar to what you previously got, but with a lot of things eliminated that were on the page before that I felt made it confusing. And I appreciate the mayor putting this into these terms. And it breaks down, like, the general maintenance into, you know, an hourly situation. Do you have specific questions on this '07 budget, either of me or the mayor, Nancy?
I just would, I'd like to know, under general maintenance, would these people be positioned at the park, and they would drive their own vehicle to the park, and there would be no vehicle they'd drive back and forth? They would be just strictly there? In other words, are there any hidden vehicle expenses that I can't see here? Other than running the lawnmower and that sort of thing? Will we have to buy trucks for them or things like that?
Don't think so. I mean, I, quite honestly, the mowing machinery, equipment and such, and a number of other items are being provided under the agreement with ODNR. I can see that we're probably going to have to have an older vehicle stationed out there just from the standpoint, people aren't going to use their private car to go to the shoulder houses if there's litter there and take it into the main dump site. You're probably going to have to have one vehicle out there, and we put in fuel, gas, and oil, not just for mowing, but also for that. But their place of work would be there. They have to get there by their private vehicle. I think the main changes I made in this was I tried to recognize that you can't just have $7 or $6.50 an hour employees out there without any supervision. We'd really like to find somebody, maybe retired, to work about 700 some hours per, you know, about 700 hours a year, spread out over the year, so they can take some time off in November, December. And, you know, the more inclement weather, that we're not going to be very intensive out there at all, but flexibly be there. We currently have a trail manager, I call it, that helps build the trails back themselves, park in the lands we have. That needs to be expended, you know, expended off. That's currently being funded. But I put it in this. General maintenance out there, I mean, Kevin and I sat and talked, and really, we can mow with two people all of our parkland in two to two and a half days. And this is not nearly as much land to mow. So we really don't need two people there 40 hours a week in the summer. One would be sufficient. What I did put in for the other weeks of the year is 10 hours a week, otherwise, two hours a day to go out and check the place, five days a week, just to make sure that, you know, everything is in good shape and everything. And then the concession, I think, there was some confusion. That's our eyes at the park while it's open. That's why it's stated in days. We'd have multiple people for what the season is, April. You know, I think 153 days would take us from early, or early to late April to mid or late September, depending upon each year how you want to do it. And cut the hours back to four hours for another 20 days, so that, you know, even, we get good weather early or late, you have some degree of revenue to put somebody out there to rent boats, to rent camping sites, to sell what's not in concession machinery type thing. So it's purely a bare bones. I mean, but in talking with ODNR, I mean, they've got basically full-time people split amongst things. Their price is higher. When you hire part-time, our fringe benefit rate is a little under 20%. And Doug had 25% of his original budget. So if the total budget can be kept under $100,000 or in the low hundreds, and we're putting, because the revenue projection that was there, I think, was 41.8, and that's, was fairly conservative, because it was based upon, we were going to cut the number of camping sites down from 80 to 50, because they've been running an occupancy that doesn't run all but 80. We still have to, as was brought out last week or two weeks ago, we talk about the boats, make sure we're, the kayaks, as to what those are, et cetera. But I think what we're talking about in this, if there's a profit or a loss, it goes to this capital reserve account. You either reverse your loss if that, if you didn't manage it right. If you have some profit, then you put it in there to help. And that's also where, if we have a fundraising event or the Friends of Strouds or other, that's where the money would go. So that, but it would be in both, both aspects there, that we, it would be an ongoing 5% of budget for, you know, total revenue should go, take, so that's including revenue you raise and monies that, you know, comes in from, from your operating.
Uh, go ahead, Jim.
Would that initial payment from ODNR be slotted there, too?
That's what I would like. I would like it to, because at this rate, it just depends upon how you look at it. Because if we could hold everything to this, not quite $100,000, and we know, let's say, we get to 41.8, we realize our revenue expectations. We get to $25,000 that we've got committed in writing from the university. That leaves 31.9, almost $32,000. But of that 32, we're already paying the $4,600 to clerical at the community center, and we're already paying for the trail supervisor. And really, by the time you get the fringe benefits, 12.5. So we're getting down to where we're talking cash about $15,000, if we can hold it to that kind of $100,000. And that's, you know, but a lot of that's just the revenue that's coming in, and it's the contracts that we have with the university for provision of services out there.
I also spent quite a bit of time with Kevin today just talking about this and what he feels, you know, his department's capable of doing. And one thing that it might be helpful for you to know is that when ODNR first talked to the city, that it involved a study of our Parks and Recreation Program. And they believe that their first reaction was Athens is too small a city to consider this kind of project. Then, after looking at our Parks and Recreation Program and how it's handled, how it's managed, they came to the conclusion that they felt that the Parks and Recreation was capable of taking it over. So there was a sort of upfront vote of confidence. When I looked at these figures today, I did the same mental process, the possibility of about 400, or 40,000 income from the various sources of income out there. $25,000 committed from OU, and then I put in an additional possible 30 that we could take from enhancement and tourism, $15,000 each, that would bring it up to, you know, this entire budget. Also, looking at the fact that the trail manager and the clerical are already in our current budget. So if you take those out, the actual increase of budget reduces by about $15,000. Other comments or questions just on the budget? Paul?
I know this in terms of concession stand, boat rental, you're, you're talking about eight hours a day, but the previous one was 10 hours a day.
I cut it back, basically, because I don't really feel that in most of the summertime, you're going to get a whole lot of people there before noon. And that really, you want your boat rentals and everything back by eight, because it's dark by 9:00, 9:15. You could flex that a little bit at different times as the daylight goes in and out. It's an operational item, item here. I mean, yeah, we're going to lose a little bit by not being open in the morning, which the other proposal had it in there, because they were open 10 hours a day. But it's just my guess.
And maintenance contracts, what are those you're talking about, Greg?
Well, maintenance contracts are probably, you know, are we going to, there's always something that comes along with your, your service vehicles or anything. There's always maintenance to be done. If we can get anything under a contractual basis, we're usually better off, because you've got guaranteed service and a service period's on. We just really used the traditional there, tried to suit at 45% to 50% of our overall operational budget would go to supplies, materials, repairs. And that was a sort of a goal that we sort of set, because you're talking about a pretty massive piece of property. Those are all interchangeable. And in essence, now, on the insurance item, yes, we did contact our current carrier. Told them what we were going to do, give us an estimate of what it is. We had to describe the property. We had to describe the buildings. We sent them all that. They said, "Uh, probably increase $2,000 to $2,500." So that's, that's kind of where we, where we put it in there. Because there isn't a whole lot of furniture and fixtures out there.
In terms of paving, the last time I was through there, it's pretty rough.
Well, we're only really talking about the parking lots. Township roads or county roads.
And the boat ramp?
The boat ramp would be ours. I mean, to a certain extent, I think, right now, we're talking an operating budget. I think that's a capital need down the road, but I think probably before that, capital-wise, the first thing I'd do is some better restrooms. You can get glorified porta-johns for about $11,000 each, that are wheelchair accessible, et cetera. The state is starting to go to those. Kevin has gone and looked at those at Fort Boone and at, I think, Baroque. And that's the biggest complaint that they have about the park is, is the restrooms.
And the boat ramps are very possibly eligible for a specific grant. That was something that we had talked about today, some of the grant monies that are available. And some of those would be available for improvements like docks and boat ramps and that kind of thing. Would you?
Yeah, I was going to say, I think that's really helpful information, because I just want to kind of express a concern. I know that many people have said that they're supportive of this, of the city managing Stroud's Park. However, they also say, you know, if it's maintained at the level it is, or hopefully better. And then a couple of people have said to me that some of the, the trails are now not mowed, and they basically say, "Natural area," which is kind of a euphemism for, you know, this is not a trail any longer. So my concern is that we don't kind of skip too much, and we don't keep cutting the budget and cutting the budget. So then, we're not really providing, you know, the kind of park experience that I think a lot of people want. I mean, obviously, we can't, we can't make it a luxury park. But I just want to caution us to be realistic and maybe bring forward some of these ideas about grants for possible, you know, improvements. And, you know, I personally would rather kind of go in with a realistic budget than, than, you know, six months down the road or something, you know, having to allocate more money.
Well, this is, this is what did please me about this particular budget is that it seems reachable without grant monies. And that doesn't mean we don't apply for the grant monies, but that grant monies can be targeted for specific projects, and hopefully, some grants will be available for the enhancement endowment. So that, to me, was a very positive step, that we're not looking for grant money to make ends meet.
So this is just bare bones operations.
This is bare bones operation.
Bare bones. Just keep it open.
Debbie, you look ready to ask?
Question about the money committed from Ohio University. The letter from Recreation and Wellness doesn't say for five years, so we just want to make sure that's specifically in the letter. At least, I don't see it in there.
That's, which one is that?
From Doug Franklin.
Oh, okay.
So I'm sure that it is there. We just need to make sure it's in the letter.
Okay. All right. Nancy?
I would like to make sure that we don't become the garbage collection agent for everybody in that watershed. I don't know how you can do it, but I wonder what the state is paying right now for taking away the garbage. I think Waste Management does it. I don't know. I, you know, I think that is a real and present concern of mine, because there is no mandatory pickup out in the county. My other concern is that we did change the mix and sent more money to Recreation. And now, Carol, you're saying, is a vote for this requirement in '07 that we would take money from both enhancement and tourism funds for this project? Or is that just a suggestion of gap funding?
That's a suggestion of a possibility.
I just want to make sure that it isn't guaranteed by this, because...
No, this was a possibility that I was saying, you know.
We could take those.
So I'm saying, we could do this budget, you know, that this is reachable for operation. Amy?
Thank you. I have a question about, one about the budget and one about the subsidy sheet. You said $25,000 from the university. Now, that's from the Health and Human Services?
It's three different colleges.
The Colleges of Arts and Sciences and the Campus Recreation. And what about the Ohio University match?
They have not agreed to that at this point.
I'm still negotiating and talking with them, but I haven't gotten anything in written commitment.
Okay, but it's still out there? Right, yeah, lunch with them on Tuesday, right?
A week on Tuesday, yes. If I'm not unsure.
I bet with them last week's. I bet with them last week's. They'll pitch it.
Keep gushing. And my other question is about the budget. Most of these are self-explanatory except for on the telephone, the $3,000, what exactly does that entail, that budget, what that money would be?
Well, we're gonna have to have a space if a telephone dropped in where that concession worker probably is right now is also in the shed areas of where the house is, where you do some of the work on the machinery and such. I would imagine we'd probably want a cell phone allowance for somebody out there. We've gotten away from paying for cell phones and going to allowances because of the IRS as much as anything. But I think if you're putting those people out there and there's times, there's only going to be one of them, you gotta give them a degree of safety. Our radios probably won't work out there, so you're probably going to have to put some cellphone money in.
Is there cellphone coverage out there?
You have to have a cellphone to the concessions. Or you have to have a phone to the concessions.
A dude's going to top one of those hills, I mean, there's...
Right. But you'd have to have a landline to the concessions.
You'd have to have a landline for those too. But it wouldn't necessarily be active all the year if it's cost beneficial to us to not have it open, you know.
I think it costs more to bank it out for the back end.
It might, it might. But I would think what we want to try to do though is at least with the, and that's where I think we're a little high, if anything, the budget. I've got 4,000 down for marketing, but somehow we have to change the public's perception that it's a state park versus a city park. And so maybe we've got to be a little bit heavy in that in the first because we're going to have to put voice machines on the lines, you know, and different, you know, how to contact us. It's just never ending.
Jamie?
I have two items which I've mentioned to you one-on-one, Carol.
Right. It's in here actually in the dialogue. In the pages that I handed you, your little packet, if you'll pull them apart and put ordinance one first. And it is in here if you look down at where I talk about...
Include just some conditions results and return of property.
Yes.
Where does it say that?
About a third, way, two thirds of the way down. Other possible points.
Oh, yes. Include some conditions that would result in return of the property. It's under other possible points, that third, fourth thought down there and the, well, I thought I put it in there.
I think it's in there.
Oh, yes, the first one. Cannot establish strong base for the endowment fund. And that's the Debbie point.
So just the idea that we need to set some amount that is going to make it sustainable through the endowment and some kind of benchmark within that period where we would be able to say, gosh, this isn't working as well as we thought it was financially. Because I don't want to run the risk of creating this ongoing financial obligation. So just to put in place a benchmark for the fundraising from foundations and grants and private donations. And then the other thing I do see in here as well that I had discussed with the mayor that the dam maintenance, as far as structural maintenance of the dam, I would rather have that clause pulled out, that if it would come into compliance, that then the city would be responsible for it. I just think if that's, if we can get them to take that out, I'd rather that they just agree that they're responsible for structural maintenance of the dam and we mow it and do the day-to-day. Because I just don't think we've got that kind of expertise on staff.
Well, I did ask Wayne that at one point. I said, well, what if? And his response was, well, we would do the same thing anybody else would do. We would contract it out if it came to that and there are agencies that could do it. We do know that it would be many years and none of us will be around anyway, but I think that's a good point and we can address it and see what they say.
Paul? Can we clarify that endowment fund before we go on?
Yes.
Three million, five million? I mean, yeah. What were they saying, what were we saying, three million or five million?
Well, to make it run.
Oh, to make it run totally off of the interest from an endowment would be about two and a half million.
Because they said three when they were here, didn't they?
I think that's what Dale said at the time.
Yeah.
Depends on interest rate, you know.
But I know it's a little budget.
But I think what Debbie was referring to when she talked to me was a threshold amount within the first year because it's only the first year, although I think we, they have the right to come back and say, we want it back within the first year. We have the right to say no, but we maintain the right by the language we put in there because we put conditions in there that say, well, if we try to sell it, if we try to do this. And I think there's also language in there that basically says, we're now out of our ability, it reverts to you. Here's the deed. So we've always got it out as a city if we determine that. But I think we hope that they would take better care of it than we were doing at that particular point in time. But we always get it out. But I think what Debbie was saying, she'd like to see a firm amount, whether that be 50,000, 100,000 or some amount that can be strived for and reached by a set time in maybe 2007 or so that would, see, is there really a commitment out there by people from an endowment standpoint? Is it really out there? And then if it wasn't there, you're gonna have to decide that that's important enough to us that we're gonna cancel the deal. Or, you know, if that commitment is there, you smile and say, keep going, you know. But I think...
How about 20%? How about, you know, just say we've got 500 to 600,000 by the, by 2008 as a requirement. That's 20% because by then you'll have exhausted one of your five years of funding from those other sources and you'll know. I mean, that may be too, but I think that's a good benchmark.
Sounds like a lot of money.
Well, yeah, well, think about three million is a lot of money. Remember, we kind of said, how long did it take the Athens Foundation to reach $3 million? And they were just saying, oh, we'll get $3 million. And I was thinking, yeah, you had trouble getting 50 when it came to Hawk Woods, what the heck? I mean, that was just one of my questions. The other thing is I really don't like language forbidding timbering, mineral rights and coal rights. Because if they own the coal rights, I don't see that you can forbid them to use it. Look at Dyser Woods.
What I did on that was just copied the email from Phil Cantino.
Right, but think about Dyser Woods. They cannot, we cannot forbid them to do it. I mean, the permitting would go through ODNR if they own the rights. But I just think that that's like setting up a problem that you don't have to have. Timbering is easy for us to do. But I don't know how we could forbid them if they, again, go back to Dyser Woods.
It says in the areas where the minerals are owned by the surface owner.
Right.
So, I mean, that would be the parkland. It would be if it's our coal.
Yeah, and if it's not our coal, then there's no point in even putting it in. I mean, if we own the surface, if the city just...
If we own the mineral rights, we're basically, if mineral rights aren't owned by us, we can't.
We can't do anything.
We can't do anything.
No, we cannot. If North American Coal owns them, they won't do anything with them because they'd have to move all those fancy houses, but I don't see that. I think it's just a red herring and they could say, we want our money for these. Then your 600,000 would go to 300 million.
Well, then focusing on this, a suggested proposal by Phil Cantino. Now, I did take out some language. He had said the city and state agree. I took out the state. We cannot dictate to the state what they can do, so I did eliminate that. But what is in here that you think we could do? You think the timber?
If we own it, we don't let anybody cut it, right?
Right.
But I think you need to ask Gary maybe, but I just...
About the mineral rights?
If they're alienated from the surface, I don't see what we can do.
Okay. Now, we certainly can regulate ginseng and...
We'd have to catch them first.
Oh, I know. But it certainly can be in there. And the second paragraph seems okay. The third paragraph, we've talked about before, another lance, I think it's fine. So I think that the only question we have then is the mineral, coal and oil. And I will talk to the law director about that. Paul?
I see in ordinance one there, the city will maintain written guidelines, establish written guidelines for the park, maintain a daily log. And when you say that, that's actually the attendance, is that when you say a log, I mean?
Whatever activities, whatever's going on out there to have.
And work towards a comprehensive management plan. That would be something that needs to be done too, I see.
Right. These are things that I'm suggesting we need to do, not before May 30th, but, you know, to start on it in this first year to begin to work through these. And when, as I read through all the material, there seems to be a willingness of ODNR and the wildlife folks and the water people to help with these things. And so while they're still interested and willing, it seems to me that that's an important time. I just tried to outline, this is the most important ordinance, obviously, what would be included in it. Let's look up at the whereas's. Are there other things that you think should be included? I included the survey results. This refers to last fall's survey. Some of you were at that presentation of the survey results. And one of the questions was, do you think the city should take over Stroud's Run? The results were, and I of course can't find it, 56% said yes, 23% said they didn't know, and 20% said no. So we certainly have some positive citizen input in that, those figures were right. I've been over them 20 times this afternoon, I know they're right.
How many total?
Three. How many total people? 300 and...
Five hundred and sixteen or something like that that answered that particular question.
Right.
I think it was, I think the question was, was positive, negative, or no impact upon the city. And most of the concerns, if you look at the notes they had, were if we can afford it, I wouldn't wonder if we can. I mean, the common concerns I think most of the citizens have, but, and it wasn't really, a survey can only do so much because, you know, you aren't at, you don't know what the deal is yet. But it's a general tenor feeling that I think it's there.
There it is. Total 621 folks. So it was 56.4 positive, 20.2 negative, and no feeling about it, 23.4%. Okay. Yes, Debbie?
The ordinances, ordinances two and three. This would be a commission that was in relationship with the city like the tree commission or other boards and commissions?
Exactly, and that's what I went to to look at to just kind of outline what needs to be included. But what council needs to decide is what responsibilities those folks would have and what do we not want them to have? The actual suggestion that they be the watchdogs for the endowment came from the mayor.
I don't, that, that went together with the third one about the fund being held by the Athens Foundation. Do we have any precedent or models for, you know, a city fund or a city, what's, you know, essentially going to be a function of one of our departments being administered through some other entity?
I will defer to the mayor on that one because that was just one of the possibilities.
Don't really know. I mean, I think that the question of it is, is it the city's funds? Or is it, you know, and that's the question we'd have to ask the law director, or are these the endow, and donations or the friends of Stroud's Run are going, et cetera? What's the source of them? What I was thinking of was with if an outside foundation, corporation, or just private citizen wanted to make a donation and wanted to say, yes, I only want this to go to Stroud's Run, they might have to go through some legal maneuvering and everything else to do that. Whereas if you give it to a designated foundation that we by ordinance are authorizing this thing to be created, or to only be spent on Stroud's Run as long as the city owns it, then maybe they're more inclined to make that because they think, well, the city could get in bad financials and they could just rob that thing. You don't know, what's the perception? Now, if it's our own city funds going into a reserve account, I mean, that's going to be a law director question that's there. But what I was thinking in many, you know, if we have to hold those our own and create reserves, whatever the state auditor say, fine. But I think for the outside public to be able to make a donation for that, that may or may not feel positive about the city 100% as they do about Stroud's Run as their passion or something, that by having something with the Athens Foundation or some other foundation that in essence would be able to ally some of those concerns, but would take us entering into an agreement, I think, with the foundation to be able to say, you know, yes, we will accept, we will maintain, we will use it for that purpose and, you know, all those things.
I guess I would just really need to see some models of that, that kind of a partnership because if there are, if there's a seven-member commission that has two elected people on it who are responsible for administering this money and their city...
No, no, they're not administering the money at all. I mean, that's why you're turning it over to Athens Foundation, they're managing the money. They're making the investments, doing all that.
When the duties say control the endowment fund, I was...
Controls the wrong word.
I don't, controls the wrong word. But what I'm saying is, who makes the decisions or the recommendations of, if you've got endowment money coming in, in operations, et cetera, who makes the recommendation that, well, we think that the best way to spend this operationally would be the following? But if you create this and their fear is the same one that creates in essence the idea of the Athens Foundation for this project is, none of us are, there's going to be a point, none of us are going to be elected officials. It's going to be a whole different group of people. They don't know who they're going to be, they don't know how they're going to act, they don't know what they're going to do. And what they're saying is, give me a stake in it. Now, I know and you know that if you create a commission, some future council can disband it. They can change how they operate and everything else. I mean, and it's really, whenever a council creates a commission, they're giving up some of their authority and responsibility, whether it's the shade tree or the zoning board or disabilities or any of them. And so you have to look at it carefully. But I'm thinking, and it doesn't necessarily have to have this by the end of June. These are things that we have to be in, have in place operationally. But these are the types of things in our planning that we're taking a look at, but I don't think they have to be resolved, done issues. Now, the items that are going to be in the agreement with ODNR, yes, those need to be...
Ordinance one, but these other ones we continue to hash over. And I mean, I, as I said, I was just brainstorming. None of this is in stone. It was to try to give you something to think about. Are these the only three things we need? Is there something else we need too? I actually have worked with a group that has what I would consider a very similar arrangement with the OU Foundation, that an endowment fund is operated through the OU Foundation and it's so far so good. It's been in about seven, eight years that it's been operated that way. But I think this is definitely a sit down with the law director and figure out what. And I think maybe it's even more appropriate not to do these until we've done that ordinance one and said, okay, is it a go or isn't it? And are we, are we ready to work on these things?
So just to clarify, endowment means contributions external to the city. We wouldn't put any city funds, we wouldn't put the arts and science. Strictly whatever, you know, similar to what the conservancy did when they collected for Hawk Woods, right? So they collected money separate in that Logan outfit?
That's my impression.
That's, see, the way, I guess, the foundation, Athens Foundation ordered to receive grants and donations for the maturity established by the park. I think we have to be a party to that, they just can't set it up on their own.
Right, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
I don't know that, you know, where I can put any city funds into it. I can ask the law director and the auditor.
No, I think that would be bad practice.
I think it would be, wouldn't be the greatest practice, but I think we can set up reserve funds and we can do certain things under state law right now, but there are limits to it.
You can have parallel funds that are city funds and the endowment fund is spread out of both of them.
And I think what Nancy was saying is, we don't want to do that. We don't want to be allocating city funds to go into an endowment.
No, I just was going to follow what Debbie was saying. I had concerns about that too. I didn't really have control. It was just a.
I, I think you can't because most, most foundations invest in stocks, and a municipality is not allowed to invest in stock. They're not even allowed to hold shares of stock. If somebody goes belly up in a bankruptcy and they send you a share, we have to immediately sell it. We can't hold it by state law.
But I, I do think that we can find examples of foundations that are involved in similar funding things.
I think I could go through my files and see where Columbus Foundation has, has funds that directly impact Columbus Parks and Recreation Fund. I mean, they're set up through the Columbus Foundation to do that. But what the inner relationships are, I don't know. But we can ask that question of the Athens Foundation and see. In fact, I've got a meeting tomorrow with them on another topic.
Going back to ordinance one, is there anything you see on there that catches your attention? That you think needs to be added, or deleted, or a word change? I mean, obviously, it's not in ordinance form, but the ideas are on there. Debbie?
The $49,500, if the endowment fund is going to be run by the Athens Foundation? Start our reserve, okay.
But I don't think we have to say that in the thing, because we've asked ODNR, do you care what we do with that? No, we're, we're going to pay you $49,500 for your, to help you out in this acquisition.
So you wanted just to say in reserve?
So I felt it was a good way to establish some kind of reserve. But I think Nancy's right, that's going to have to be kept in city.
It can be a fund, a city fund that's designated or.
Sure.
Can we define comprehensive management plans somehow? I don't know if we have to, but at least in our own minds, what that would mean sometime, maybe not today, maybe not next week. But, you know, you're going to, we're going to do that, but what does it exactly mean?
Well, that's the question.
Well, that's what we tried to outline in that one matrix that Christine Fall and such did, to give an example of some of the different things that we felt as a committee needed to be in the, in it. I think we'd start from there. We have sample plans from other parks and recreation areas that are very specific to theirs. But I think a goal has to be to develop that. Now, does it have to be in the agreement with ODNR?
No, no, no.
No, I just think there's some differences. I hear different people saying different things, and I'm a little concerned about how that will be adjudicated.
The, the list of the city will, was more in line with during this first year, things that we should be, goals and objectives that we should have. And one of the frustrations that I heard from Christine was that ODNR didn't have a management plan for the park. So they, there really wasn't a model for them to follow. And, and so perhaps that model needs to come from us. What do we want in it?
I've said it before, I'm a little worried that, you know, there's a real strict environmental view of it, and then there's the user view of it, and I'm a little concerned about the disconnect between those two. And I don't think it's, I mean, I think it's not easily resolved yet if we know in advance that the ultimate product will probably be somewhere in between those two viewpoints, because I don't think it's going to be a preserve. First place, it's not good enough to be a preserve. It's been logged and abused. But that's not to say we shouldn't plan, but I just.
And find that balance.
Find that balance, some sort of in-between point. It's not pristine, so let's not pretend.
And this discussion reminds me, it says, the city will establish written guidelines for the park. And is that guidelines for use? What is that guidelines for what? Maybe just have some clarification.
Again, it's whatever we want them to be, that, you know, we've got guidelines for usage. Now, there's some things that are outlined in the ODNR agreement, and that's where I kind of bulleted things that are in the ODNR, because it says basically, continue activities similar to what has been out there, at the same time being true to the original mission of a natural park.
But this is for the city to do over the first year? It's kind of like a management, I mean, seems to me, part of a management plan in a way, but probably, take some action in terms of use and other things.
Doesn't the community center have some policies and procedures that you have? Wouldn't it be similar to that? So that's, you know, a set of guidelines?
Sure. I mean, if somebody's conduct is not right, you have to have the proper thing to borrow them from the property.
Is that what we're talking about, there are guidelines?
Guidelines.
I thought it was broader.
Well, it's broader, and it's, I think it has to also include that sort of thing, because it's, this is different from anything we have.
Because we don't have a rifle range anywhere else.
Yeah.
There will be guidelines for all those things, the beach, don't chase the geese, or don't hit the geese, or whatever.
Don't be attacked by them.
Okay, no, it was also kind of operational, but.
I just, okay. No, I'm just waiting for general statements.
Well, my only general statement is that I will go back and, and try to hash out actual ordinance language and talk to the law director about a couple of these points that would have to be sorted out before ordinance one can be brought forward, and try to do that for sure in the next two weeks, so that we can then move it forward. Before the next.
And you're going to have a target, a financial target, and there that is. And, you know, then the council can always, that's here at the time, can look at it and say, okay, well, they're going to get close to that. But I, just so we know that it's, it's not going to be 20,000. It's going to be a lot of money.
Hundred thousand a year.
Yeah, more than that. Let's go for five to six. I mean, because you're talking.
Five to 600,000 dollars a year.
She said by the second, by the 08.
Yeah. I mean, because they'd have to have a pretty hefty down payment. I mean, they talked about 3 million like it was nothing, and I was going, whoa.
I didn't think they thought it was nothing.
Well, I mean, they were just kind of, well, that's just people that don't have very much money anyway. They were talking. I won't say who. You know who I'm talking about.
Anything else? Jim?
Just in general. In the past week, I've had several people, quite a few people, approach me personally, by phone, or whatever, all expressing support for this, and every single one of them with the caveat of, if you can, if we can afford it. So it is, it's a, it's a general feeling throughout. Two recommendations that I heard, one from a, a person who lives outside the city, up on Scatter Ridge, and drives the county road through there, would like us to put some pressure on the county. She thinks that some areas that road are unsafe. And.
It's a bicycle way.
And the other one is from a person who uses the park regularly, but would enjoy seeing the development of maybe some primitive campgrounds at some point.
Anything else from anyone at all? You cannot. You certainly should. Give us your name and address. And don't talk more than three minutes.
Can't say much there. I'm Greg Broadhurst. I live at 14 Granville Avenue in Athens, and I am a natural resource professional. I just want to say that I'm totally, I totally support the, the efforts of the city to acquire Stroud's Run as an opportunity for future generations, not only for us today, but for future generations. It may be news to you, and I wrote you an email. I don't know if it was, anybody had a computer here today, but I wrote an email to the city council, to the effect that a transfer of lands between the state and metro park districts and non-governmental organizations and political subdivisions is not something new in Ohio. As a matter of fact, the creation of Cuyahoga Valley National Park is a result of many, many years of those kind of transactions taking place. So if you go to the Cuyahoga Valley National Park website, you can read a little bit about that history. It's kind of interesting, because there's some coincidences here. This is something that, this, this type of expansion of a park district, or a city forest and parks, lands and greenways, needs probably a bit more planning and, and more input from people who have experience in natural resources and parks and forest management. I, I, I know that, I've been listening to people talk, and it's kind of interesting, because you can project a number of costs and expenditures and this sort of thing. But if you haven't actually worked in the field, it's kind of hard to really put a, you know, a real perspective on what, what those, what those costs are going to be, for what, for what period of time. When you're talking about the monies that I've been hearing here, you're not going to get too many people in the natural resource field who already work for too little to come out and, and, and work at those kind of rates. And it's not going to be successful in that, in terms of management. I will say though, and Bojinka had managed it, and I said something about it, there are lots of resources for funding out there. This is the Stroud's Run manual. This is, oh, by the way, this is National Park Week, April 22nd to the 30th. And I just happen to be a seasonal NPS, National Park Service Ranger myself, so I wanted to make a point of that. But I also wanted to say that there are a number of funding sources which need to be investigated as soon as possible, because the grant cycles will be coming up within next year. I'll mention a couple, a couple of them. One is, is an organization that could be a repository for monies that we were just talking about, which is an organization called the Trust for Public Land. They've done projects all over Ohio that you, that have, have included their inputs, and they have a lot of different services for planning, for, for setting up campaigns, for financing, a number of things. So I think maybe we'd need to go to the next level and investigate a lot of these things. There's, National Park Service has a land and concert, land and water conservation fund, which from I've been reading recently, and a, from initiative by a number of congressmen from New England, is probably going to be refunded here shortly. I, I won't, because I only got three months, three minutes, I can't tell you. And, okay, I don't have three months, but three months. I, I could, I could go on and on and on. I did write an email to the city council, like I said, stating that there are some things that I thought need to be looked at. One of them is, that, you know, just like Cuyahoga Valley, which took years, and a number of other projects, Mentor Marsh, and, and North Chagrin Reservation, Bass Creek, I can cite all these for you at some time if you're interested. My email will be coming to you, so my email address will be on that, even if I am, I'm actually leaving for the, the season to work at Catoctin Mountain National Park. So I, I will be able to be accessed by email, so I'd be able to give you any kind of, I'll be, act as a resource for you if you like. And we definitely need to look at these, these other funding sources because they're numerous. Here's one magazine here that, that was put out by Trust for Public Land. It's called Green Sense, Financing Parks and Conservation.
I, I do think that one thing that needs to be noted is that our recreation department, Kevin, has been very successful at applying for and receiving grants. And it, he gave me a list this afternoon, and it amounts to hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. And some of those funds have dissipated, but other things come on the horizon, and, and he's very aware that this particular project will be eligible for some monies that nothing else would be, that, that we've worked with. So, and he writes a good number of those grants himself, and, and has had a high success level. So that's good news for us. And I certainly think any suggestions in terms of specific places to apply for would be well placed in his hands.
Yeah, I also, like I said again, I, I think it's really important that experienced natural resource professional parks and forest managers are involved in this process of developing this project.
Right.
It's not about running a rec center, I guarantee you. It's much bigger than that. It involves a wider expansive programming, has to do with the care of the, of the land, and it takes a person with the, with the background to be able to do that, or persons to be able to do that. And I think that's something that needs to be looked at most expeditiously in order for this to be successful, including environmental education programs and aspects of natural resource interpretation, and also conservation of the resources that are there. I will add, I know I, beyond my three minutes.
You're way off of your.
Watershed, Dow Lake, originally was created as a watershed project historically. And the fundings that are available now through the Ohio EPA and a number of, of other granting organizations are, are heavily geared towards the watershed approach. And I think that this project actually would be benefited by taking a look at initially working with the alleviating of some of the environmental problems that exist by taking the watershed approach and applying for that money. There's actually one grant program that pays for a coordinator for five years. That's at a $40,000 a year salary, just for instance. And that's not just one grant to one particular governmental organization or subdivision or NGO. So be, you're welcome to pick my brain. I wanted to be included. I wrote some emails, but I didn't get anything back. So I decided I had to come here and let you know that, yes, I'm still available. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Anything else? Now, we will move on. I do have a couple just miscellaneous announcements at the next meeting. I will be asking for a renewal of, for the folks on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. And so I'll just be making that motion next week. It's, nobody knew, just renewals. And the other thing was to announce that due to the problems that Rover, we did contract with the university to take in some of their refugee well works people in our program for the time of the repairs. And so we made an agreement with them until Rover is back in operation. So that's our little goodwill thing for the day. Anything else miscellaneous?
Seriously, when I mentioned a, a field trip to Stroud's, I was kind of serious. Have we thought about it?
Yes, I've thought about it. I thought about it just about 5 o'clock when I knew Melissa wouldn't be in the office. But I will follow up on that as well.
Okay, thanks.
We're adjourned.
Okay, the best for last transportation committee will now convene, although I don't know where everybody went, since we're at the most exciting part of the meeting. Okay, first, first item on the agenda is the West Union Street paving from Shaker to Jefferson, doing some paving, curb work and sidewalks. As I've been discussing with the mayor, we want to bid this as an alternate to the High Street paving project. I'll go ahead and pass around the construction cost. The one that has the highlights on it is for the West Union Street, and this one is for the High Street. And as it stands now, the total construction will be 254,000, plus the 20% for contingency, with the issue two money being 126,558. And then the sidewalks that we will take in is 47,500. Total cost is 312,000. And we're wanting to bid it as an alternate to the High Street paving, which the bids on the High Street are going to be opening around May 11th. Is that right? May 11th? So, any questions on?
And the sidewalks will be built by billing the people.
Right, 40, and that's the 47,500. Right. That is what will be billed to the property owner.
That's to the High Street stuff?
No, that's for the Union Street. Excuse me. Yeah, that's for the Union Street. Are there any questions about that? Okay, I'll move on. I have two miscellaneous items quickly. The first one is the Cruisins. I got the Cruisins scheduled, which all of you should have received a copy in your mailbox. As you can see, the first one is on June 24th, then July 28th, and then August 18th. I talked to Bill on the phone this morning, and just got the times of which they want the streets closed. So I will put up her first reading next week, the ordinance for the June 24th. Can we do these all together?
Yeah, usually they get all done together.
Well, the times are different, but they can be all still in the same ordinance.
One ordinance.
Good, okay. So then. Good, okay. So then, if no one perceives a problem with that, we'll just take care of that, or start the first reading next week.
Oh, yeah, okay. I was just trying to figure out where the money was going to come.
Okay. Okay, that's one miscellaneous item. Questions? No? Okay. The next item is the, as you remember, on the street tour, we went down to the service garage, and we looked at vehicles number 113, or truck number 113, and then truck 120. As Ron has put together a nice little sheet here on the request, the purchase request for both new trucks, on both of those, I know we went down, they are in pretty poor shape, and do need some replacement. So he's listed the uses of each of those trucks, some of the issues with those trucks, and I'm sure you'll find after reading those, that they are sort of severe and could use replacement, same as with the number 120 truck, which, as I think Nancy referred to, that's one of, that's our grass and brush pickup truck. That is in poor shape, so.
How much is that one going to cost?
You'll see on the...
I'm on page three, and I haven't found it.
Fourth page, right after his little note to us.
Seventy-two thousand?
Thirty-seven.
Come on, you're doing it.
Together, yeah. Together, the cost on purchasing the new vehicles will be 72,938, with the sign truck, which is the number 113, is 35,561, and the grass and brush truck, darn it, is 37,377. Both of them, I believe, are 90, 92 models, a lot of rusting, and needs for repair. And he's also included a maintenance chart, also on the projected, looks like parts replacement. So it seems like a worthy investment if we are to go ahead and purchase these new vehicles now, as opposed to continuing to repair them. So, any questions on that?
No.
No?
No, I have a question, though, for the miscellaneous. It's not on your agenda.
All right, and I have one more. I just want to make the announcement that the beautification day is this Saturday. I know that they are maxed out on projects and volunteers, as far as if they get more volunteers, then they have to provide more food and things like that. So as far as this being, you know, first year trial, they're maxed out. That is this Saturday, and I believe that we're all going to be wearing the same shirt, so you'll probably see us around town either painting and mulching and whatever else. I don't know what the weather's supposed to be like. Hopefully, it's going to be nice. So, but...
I was going to say, I think this initiative has raised a lot of interest, and I know that, like, the Community Relations Commission and some other people are actually doing projects, you know, in a sense. I don't want to say independently, but on the same day as part of this beautification. And I'm sure other groups are, too. I think it started kind of a movement in terms of having that day be a cleanup day.
And that's all I have from this.
Wait, let me ask you a question. When we were on street tour, we looked at the sidewalk on Stewart Street. Could you put up a resolution similar to the one that we put up for...
The one in...
That goes from the incomplete sidewalks on the eastern side of Stewart Street to the, to East Union, please?
Yes, I think that Paul and I actually talked before the meeting, and he had given me what is called a, what is this called? A resolution of necessity.
Yeah, notice of necessity, resolution of necessity for doing the sidewalk.
Whatever it takes. I just, you know, David Ingram and other people have repeatedly said to us, why can't you get that last little bit of sidewalk there?
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, I gave, I gave Amy some of that resolution from 88, 988, about resolution for necessity, in terms of the higher revised code thing, saying we want this sidewalk done, and we'll try to...
And charge the owners of the property.
Right, of course.
Yes.
If we can, and I don't know. They're all rental properties.
Do you get notice first before you do that?
Yeah.
Amy?
You tell them to fix it.
I have one item.
Paul, remember, while sidewalk, we're in trouble.
Okay, one thing, I went to the Earth Day celebration. That was Saturday. Since I was there, they hit me with transportation things. One saying that they challenged, one person challenges all the city council members to get on a bike and ride through Court Street and see how dangerous it is. They would like bike paths, et cetera, et cetera. And I just mentioned it to you as communication. This means I don't have to communicate it next Monday. The other one, of course, was actually, they mentioned an intriguing idea, which was basically, I guess it's North Congress at that point, between State Street and Washington. I guess that's South Congress. The idea of eliminating the hillside there, where there's a wall on one side, of course, that would be the west side of the street. The discussion got to be how dangerous that street is, and eliminating the parking on it, which, of course, is muted parking, would be a loss of revenue, with the idea that you'd make it a wider street, because those lanes are very short, thin, or narrow, I should say. And I just bring this up.
But just make people drive faster.
Yes.
That's what I said. But at the same time, this is something considerate, and I'm just perking it up as communication.
And then we'll segue right into my miscellaneous.
Put that down for the city planner, Paul.
What?
Put that down for the city planner.
Good idea.
Yes, and mine goes to the city planner as well, but this was an incident that came to my attention on Franklin, and there, there's a house that has absolutely no parking. And they want to put eight rental folks in there. So obviously, they're not going to get that permit. The previous owner let the rental permit lapse, and a new person can't get a rental permit because of the parking. My question is, in cases like that, and it certainly is not the only one, what do we want to happen to those properties? We've got this situation where we've said, no, you can't have a rental permit. Somebody, a family, are they going to buy it with absolutely no parking on a very crowded street? What? What is our intention? What can we do to make something usable? And I don't know what the answer is. There have been discussions of should there be parking lots available when a piece of property just practically becomes useless? Do you tear it down? I know there've been some places where slips were involved among Grosvenor that have been torn down. But at this point, that property is on, for sale for less than $40,000. It's a huge house.
You mean buy it and make it a parking lot?
Well, that, this particular one, that wouldn't work.
It's in an R3 zone, right?
No, it's R1, isn't it?
Is it? Well, there's R3 down there. What's its address? You know, that's the thing. If it's a four-person house, that's one thing, but if you're going for eight, that says to me that they're going for the max. And so I don't think, you know, they have the zoning board.
I'm not saying what the answer is. I'm saying we've got, we've got a potential big question here, as we start to look at some of these places go up for sale, not have a rental permit attached.
Sounds like an affordable house for...
Yeah, that's what happened up on Forest and Fort Street, those at end, that's around the corner from you.
Well, I will say, that particular house would take at least another 40,000 to 60,000 to get it livable.
So there are some residents there. They hate it, the noise, but... Paul?
Okay, this is, this is something for the zoning board, one. Two, if it's an R1, you can't have parking lots. In theory, the, what the land, the owner did by not renewing the rental license, he lost his value of the house.
Right, I understand that.
And it's, and this house, if it needs work, has been stripped mine, essentially.
Right.
So therefore, I can, I have no problem with the house dropping in price until it reaches something where somebody will purchase.
I'm not worried about him getting his price. I'm worried about a very dilapidated piece of property sitting empty on our residential areas. And as far as not being able to put in parking lots, that could be changed.
The nature of dilapidation, if it falls into the code where it has to be demolished, then that's where it goes. I mean, from my point of view, I mean, we can plan around individual cases like this, but if there's no room, and this is a, you know, something that falls through the cracks in terms of renewing a non-conforming use.
It's not the only one.
Oh, no, it isn't.
I mean, I went down, that's how I ended up at code, was talking about that house and other houses like it, and what should, what is our future on streets like that? And Congress is not unlike that as well.
A lot of times, people have taken off their porches and put parking in the backyard. We saw that on the street tour. I mean, there's a lot more probably runoff from some of those and put parking in the backyard with driveways that are worse than mine, which is amazing. That bad.
Well, I don't know. Are there some, you know, social services that don't need parking? Oh, you can't have it in that neighborhood?
We're not going to resolve anything with this tonight.
Yeah, yeah, tonight. But it's an interesting issue to think about.
I'm just wanting you to think creatively and think what, what you can do.
We had a meeting with, with a conversation with council about parking, where we were beginning to talk about, are there instances where some kind of permit parking is allowed when there is no possible way to develop parking for particular houses? Because there are numerous houses throughout the city that are in that situation. So that conversation could be continued.
Paul?
To jump subjects, I know when we went on street tour, there's some people who were talking about putting mirrors on corners. Do we have the ability to do that? I just noticed there was one on the corner of High and State Street by the...
It was in the last week, yeah.
So do we have a list of those? Because I know one on Franklin, Walker and Miller would be nice. And I think somebody up on Congress and Woodward wanted it.
No, it's broken. It was there.
It gets broken all the time.
I believe they've been one.
Okay, well, I'm surprised. Okay, so you just put the one up on High Street? How long ago? Two weeks?
Less than that.
Okay, so we'll watch that.
Yeah. We're willing to try every so often.
Okay, should, if somebody wants one of these things installed, should they contact you or Ron, or?
Yeah, Ron would be fine. He orders them, and he checks out the sites for me, et cetera. I mean, it's anywhere in the city that might have, that they just don't have vision coming out of their driveway, or from one street to another, that's, it's very difficult for vision purposes. We're willing to try that and hope that...
I assume this was for the buses. That's why you did it.
One of the reasons. Why we can't see around the buses when they're there picking up the kids. And everybody that comes out of there says, I'm in danger here. So that's one of the reasons we did that.
Okay. I'll probably relay some to Ron. Thanks.
Okay. Anything else for the best for last committee? No? All right, we are adjourned.
Next time.